December 14, 2015. This is the municipal caucus. I had a scheduled 5:30 PM start. The clock on my cellphone is showing 5:33 PM. May I have a roll call for the commencement of this caucus? Councilperson Kajuski?
Yeah.
Councilperson Ramchow?
Giants.
Councilperson Bociano?
Yeah.
Councilperson Young?
Here.
Councilperson Osborne is not here. Councilperson Coleman?
Here.
Councilperson Rebeber will not be here. Councilperson Waterman?
Here.
And Council President LaVaro?
Here.
So we have seven members in attendance. And we are in total compliance with the Sunshine Law. This agenda was disseminated on Thursday, December 10, 2015, at 4:00 PM to the mayor, council, BA, and the newspapers. I'm going to turn it over to the council president.
Before we begin with the official business, can I just ask for a moment of silence for the victims of San Bernardino, California? Thank you. So we'll begin with Director Shea. There's one item. Which item is this?
Sean, I don't have it in front of me. I'm sorry. Yeah, it's an emergen... Hey, what's up Bobby? It's an emergency resolution to spend money that we've gotten from the Department of Homeland Security on active shooter training.
I'll get that for you.
Yep. And I apologize to everybody for bringing it in at a late date, but the money came in and we have the training scheduled and we want to pay everybody. We want to be able to use it.
I'm going to get it for you in a second.
How are you?
All right.
All right. Do you have the resolution? Which is my resolution?
Uh...
Should be a late item. Bobby's looking for it too.
Is this Z-35 or...?
Yeah, it's not only printed in, it's part of the packet that was left on top. It's Resolution Z-35, Resolution Number 15897, to Resolution Ratifying Emergency Contract with Tomahawk Strategic Solutions to Provide Evaluation and Training to the City's First Respondents.
Director?
Yeah. This is unfortunately a part of the world we live in these days. We identified gaps in our capabilities to respond to active shooter or hostage situation and in our training. And we hired this company, an outside company, to come in and do an evaluation about six to eight months ago. And very small feat. They came in and did a complete evaluation. The company is composed of ex-military special forces type personnel and ex-police officers who've responded to these things in the past from New York, Virginia Tech, et cetera, et cetera. We have a... I can't talk too much. We have reciprocal nondisclosure agreements with them. They're not allowed to disclose the training they give us. We're not allowed to disclose their backgrounds, et cetera. Anyway, long story short, they identified significant gaps, gave the mayor and I a report on gaps in training, equipment, a few other things. We've been slowly but surely, with your help, fulfilling those. Last year, you helped us get some of the equipment we need to bring it up to speed. We started doing the training. We trained the emergency service unit first, utilizing a couple empty buildings and the department's active shooter building where we train the cops. We trained them separately and we trained the officers at the same time, utilizing our own personnel. Then we did a drill here in City Hall. We did an active shooter drill here consisting of three separate scenarios, each based on real-life things that happened around the United States, two in New York and one in another state. And now, the Department of Homeland Security, we told them what we were doing. We applied for funds through Director Kiers and they granted us this $200,000. We're only asking you to spend $100,000 now because we want to wait and see what we need to rest on. They gave us $200,000 for active shooters specifically to improve our active shooter capability. We can't spend it on weapons or anything. It has to be spent on training or training aids. So we have a... The reason for the urgency, we have a... Our next scenario will be happening at a building over on the waterfront. That's where we're going next. We're going to be doing that this month. It's going to be a major exercise, including the Jersey State Police, the Port Authority, the FBI, and ourselves. And we're going to be doing three or four scenarios there. And it's also including private security and private citizens at that location. And then in January, we want to do one at St. Peter's University. We already have a commitment from them to do one there and we'd like to follow that up. I just got a call from Jersey City University, the security director there who wants to follow us up with that. Then we'll probably come back to another location, either a government building or over here in the waterfront. So this is Homeland Security Fund specifically for this. We didn't just get them. The entire U.A.C.I. region did, so Newark did and a couple other places. But we'd like to continue doing this type of training based, obviously, on what we've seen recently in Paris and San Bernardino. Sad, but it's the world we live in.
I just want to say it was a great idea. The last exercise, myself and Candace and Danny were part of the procedures in City Hall here where we did the actual... Excuse me, I can't bear to talk. But I mean, talking to the director, I've been on for quite some time about the need to upgrade the training, 100% for it. I think it's a great idea and thank you for that. Actively, please.
Thank you. One other thing, in response to several queries from the council recently, we're also at this one incorporating tactical communication training, which we're going to be able to expand to the entire department on how to deal with emotionally distressed persons, people acting irrationally, et cetera, which we think will help us address some of what we've seen around the country, where it seems like excessive force has been used when there were other options available. And usually, it turns out that the officers weren't trained in the other options available. So since last year that was bought up, we have purchased the tasers and the emergency service unit has them now. We've expanded our non-lethal, less lethal options with the pepper spray so that the officers don't have to go right from physical force to deadly physical force. We've provided two more options in the middle. And now we're hiring... Not hiring, but we're bringing in to evaluate probably the top tactical communications person, worldwide recognized. They brought him down to Guantanamo Bay, the military to talk down there. He's going to be at this drill evaluating how our officers do and he'll provide us with a report and then we'll take it from there. But we hope to scale that out to the whole department on how to deal with people under emotional distress, people acting irrationally, how to use communication to avoid having to use force. Yeah, and everybody's invited. It's from the council. It's the 20th. It'll be December 20th. And if you need me, please... And if you're interested, please email me and I'll give you the exact location. Starting early in the morning, but you can come anytime. There'll be three scenarios going on.
Can I ask? Okay. Thank you. And you had to try to prepare City of Jersey City for worst-case terrorist effect. I really appreciate it. But more my concern is that while you are here, and you are very busy, you know, while you're here, the past two months, we have so many shootings going into the city. You know, so I'd like to hear that what was the reason, suddenly those things happen, you know, spikes so high? And what is your plan? You know, I'd like to hear from your side.
Okay. Yes, councilman, thank you. If I'd known you were going to ask that, I'll email you some maps that I showed some of the other council people who asked the same questions. But basically, I'll have to go back. On May 23 of this year, on May 23, we were up for the year over the previous year in shootings, homicides, and shooting victims. At that time, that's the day that I think everybody here remembers, where we had five separate shooting incidents in one 24-hour period, back on May 23. That involved two groups that I'm not going to identify, but most of you know who they are. That involved two groups. We put together a plan to deal with them. We put permanent posts out there on their locations and that slowed it down. And we ended the summer, on October 4, we had 11 homicides for the year. Today, we have 24. Now, of that 24, 16 are shooting homicides, five, God help us, are physical force, two are knives and one is a hammer. You know, the last eight all involve people who know each other inside locations. The 16 are out in the street, kind of what you're talking about. That number jumped from probably, at that time, probably around eight to... We had eight in the last two months. Now, what it looks like happened is we had about four or possibly five individuals get out of prison or jail. They were very bad people and they mattered to the kids out there. And they got out and immediately began causing trouble with each other. One of them was a robber and robs other drug dealers. That always causes problems here and other places. Others were just... Thought they were tough guys. And they carry guns and they began the latest spate of violence, which happened in October and November. That spate of violence, since we're talking about it, is depressingly familiar. Every single victim had a history of carrying firearms and using firearms. Every single perpetrator that we identified also did. They all live in Jersey City. They're local. And most of them were shot within three blocks from where they lived their entire life. It wasn't happening at first on where we were. The earlier violence in this city was centered on the 412s around Ocean and MLK. MLK in Orient, Ocean, a little further down Rutgers, and up around the Salem-Lafayette area. This started to push onto the midnights. We moved cops onto the midnights. It went to broad daylight inside a bodega. We put cops onto MLK and Ocean. It went to the side streets. Then it even pushed to 6:00 AM at IHOP, Neptune and Old Bergen, you know, to... It started to move all around. We put together a plan, talked to the prosecutor, the mayor and us. We talked to prosecutor about these... The last 52 gun arrests we've made, last 52, 30 of them are out on bail. So they were caught with a firearm and allowed... You know, and got... Now, bailers are right in this country. It just means you come back to court. But I'd like them to take into account kind of the danger to the community of some of these people. The last 52 gun arrests that we've made, the Jersey City PD has made, 36 of them, it was at least the second time they had been caught with a gun. 36 out of the 52. Now, there's good and bad in that. The bad is that they're still out there doing it. The good is there are less people that are willing to take a gun and shoot somebody than we think. It's just the same people keep doing it over and over, you know, over and over again. So we identified the 40 to 50 I always talk about. We sent our people out there. Last weekend, not last weekend, the weekend before, the Jersey City PD made 12 separate gun arrests in this area, including people that we thought were among those couple who got out that mattered and were causing all of this. They're in. You may have no... It has subsided a little bit. We see the difference out in the street. Now, what we've done on top of that is we are putting extra police officers in all the areas where these shootings have been taking place. Footposts out there pretty much 16 hours a day and then... And the midnight footposts are a waste, so we're going to cover it with zone cars. So some of the people who are involved in policing, they know that means you have to stay in a tight little zone where there's... Where the violence is happening. We're going to continue with that and go into the new year doing that. We've adjusted our minimum manning to make that effective. Problem being, as you know, we have about 805 police officers. We have 32 in the academy right now. We hired 40. We're down to 32. Eight have quit already.
That's why three months ago, somebody in this building stopped us from possibly getting back our police academy. And Director, we have to force the issue. We have to get our police academy back.
I was just talking to one of the assembly people.
Well, what happened? He was going to take care of it.
Well, everybody's working on it, but it's not going to happen overnight. We either need a county one or we got to get a waiver from the PTC.
Commission, you and I were supposed to testify before the state. He stopped us. We could have gotten back our academy. We could have been in the process of having it. And it's got to happen because we're getting killed up in C and D and parts of B with cars being broken into, armed robbery. People aren't reporting about this because they feel it's a waste. We have to get our academy.
You said somebody stopped it. You said somebody stopped it.
I don't want to get into that.
Listen, I'll defer to you on that, but we all agree that we need an academy. And actually, I was just talking to one of the assembly people and they were supporting trying to get us in Newark together to do it.
Excuse me. That's... Director, to explain here...
So we're going... So we're putting those footposts in. We're going to expand them to the east and the north and put them like in the areas where the crimes that the councilman is talking about so that they don't get ignored, you know, on the east and the north. But I'll be quite honest with you, the disproportionate amount will be going to the south and the west, which is where this crime is occurring.
Director, I have one more question.
Yes, sir.
It's a very hot issue. The fire promotions were the other day. On that list, there's two Jersey City people, well-known families, and I think before the 19th, there should be another four promotions. They should make the two Jersey City people.
The promotions... Listen, I'm not going to get into...
I'm just going to bring this out. I was going to talk to you about it on Wednesday, but we might as well talk about it now because Wednesday might be too late. You know, they stopped, they were making... I don't want to get into it. I'll talk to you on Wednesday. But they should make the promotions and make the two Jersey City residents that are born, raised here, their families are here, they have a business in Jersey City, and they're good, good people.
The only thing I'll say, I make a point. I never look at a name on that list. I have no idea who it... Their numbers to me, they're not names. We don't skip anybody. We don't pick anybody. 11 gave us 30... Well, we have four groups. 11 gave us 31 captains per group to try to turn out 26 companies at best. More than that, as you know, I've said in the past, and we're working on changing it because we're coming up to the first contract that needs to be redone, the firefighters. But the way the contracts are now, since we can't spread the vacations out evenly over the 12 months, we're constantly... Not enough, too many. Not enough, too many. We can't let it go to too, too many, or we're going to be riding around on a truck with three firemen supervised by two captains. You know, it doesn't add a lot of money.
They're bringing in overtime captains every night. They're bringing in battalion chiefs every night. I mean, that's a tremendous cost. It's easier just to make the few more promotions and, you know, a couple of battalion chiefs because we're paying for them anyway, every night. Last night, I believe, we had four houses closed, four engine companies closed. Tonight, I think the same thing. Tomorrow night. I mean, it's got to stop. There was a fire, I was told. Engine 15 was off. There was a fire up in my neighborhood. Engine 15 was off.
Not familiar with that. I'll look into it.
I know, but the firemen, you have a lot of firemen in your office. And, you know...
I just wanted to ask, you said you don't look at any names?
Yeah.
Which I like the way that sounds. You go by what? Time?
No.
Hours? What... How do you make the promotions in the...
Promotions in the police and the fire department go by civil service lists. So in other words, I have a list. Like, we're about to get a new fire captain list and it'll be from 1 to 30. And if we need six, I make a point of not looking at the names because I don't want to know who they are. Because some of them I don't like.
I think that's what they are. I think that's the way to do it. Because once you start slipping around on those names, somebody is going to get a preference and I don't think that should be the case either.
Or I'm going to hurt someone.
That maybe I had a dispute with.
Director, no. Yes. Concern is that the... Yes, that the... That short of the manpower, we all wear that the police officer. So Council Rich Bociano insists that to, you know, the police academy, we can, you know, educate more people to be a police officer in Jersey City. We understand, you know, provide the manpower to the city. But now, my question is that... Question is that it's a north and east, north district, east district, and we have a different crime, you know? So I don't want to that they pull out the manpower from the north district, transfer, you know, west and south. I think they have some kind of a, you know, consideration we have to have because we have different, you know, crime rate and, I mean, different type of crime, actually, is more than someplace else now. So we got to keep on... And I give a lot of credit with that Commander Edgar Martini. He did a great job, you know what I'm saying? He responds 1:00 o'clock in the morning. He's really wonderful. And then now, second issue is that he mentioned the council, Rich Bociano mentioned the police academy. I'd like to have some kind of comparison chat, you know? When we have a police academy in Jersey City, how much it costs with and without outsourcing our trained police officers outside, how much will be... We should know there's some numbers, other than just keep saying, "Police academy, police academy." We don't know nothing about by numbers, you know what I'm saying? So I scratch my head, what we doing here? So those kind of things we should be to understand, you know? And another one...
How much does it cost to go to Jersey City?
Yeah, cost of the...
I'd just like to say that here's where Councilman Bociano, I'm going to support his point.
If we just look at the numbers, I'm not sure what they'll say, but there probably might have been some... I'm sure there must have been some savings for them to close the police academy. But what it did, councilman, if I could...
I can honestly say, because I've worked there for 15 years, there was really no savings there. They did it. It was wrong. Kelly did it. And it was wrong. I was bringing in money to the police academy, we're about running classes for cops throughout the United States. And when they closed it, I had 10 cops coming from Thailand who were going to pay $1,000 a person to come to an academy here.
So I was going to finish by saying that, even if there was a minimal economic benefit, it was incredibly short-sighted because it completely removes your flexibility to deal with situations as we have now. Because now, whatever it costs us to pay to train, we can't do it because we're at the mercy of another academy granting us the seats, you know, to send our people. And they can call us at the last minute and say, "Sorry, one of our local sheriffs decided he wants those 10 seats, so you can't go." So even if there was a minimal economic benefit, in my opinion, and I don't vote... It wasn't my decision, but in my opinion, it was short-sighted in terms of limiting the flexibility of the city to deal with these type of situations.
So we were that they were short of the manpower. So I looked at the research in a lot of different towns. Some town, they have a part-time police officer they hire. You know, it's like down south, you know, summertime, they have, you know, like a 5,000 population, they have 20,000 people visiting. So they didn't have the police officer operating 24 hours, I mean, the whole year round, they just hired a part-time police officer that time, you know what I'm saying? So, you know, that picks that month, maybe May to end of August. It's a meantime. Meantime, we cannot have a police academy now. Can we actually ever hire a part-time police officer?
So that would violate the contract, yeah?
What do you mean violate the contract?
The POBA is the representatives... The officers are the only group that can serve as that function. You can't have a part-time group outside the union service in Jersey City. It's a labor issue.
Labor issue.
So we can hire specials even?
But I mean, by state, we able to do that, right? Because other town they do. I know that the Hoboken they do, Union City they do, there are a lot of surrounding area they do now. But my concern is that we just blamed short of the manpower, but somehow, with your leadership, hire some part-time police officer, like seasonal police officer, to fill the gap that we have, whatever. Something, we have to come up, more positive plans to solve the problem.
It's Michael. The answer...
If I was going to...
I mean, just as a country, we understand, but if they can't actually provide public safety issue to the people of Jersey City, then we should change somewhere.
Okay, let me... First, they would still have to attend an academy, so the problem would not go away. They would... That's the first thing. So if we have seats in the academy, I'd rather fill them with full-time police. The mayor has provided us with funds. This is the first time... I've been in policing for 30 years and gentlemen here have been here longer than me and I think they're going to agree with me on this. I can never remember a time that any municipality ever was willing to spend money to hire police officers and couldn't. It's usually the opposite. It's usually that you're trying to convince people to spend the money to hire them, where the mayor and you and yourselves constantly commit the money to hire the classes and we can't get the seats, you know, in these other academies to put them in, or else we would have hired more people and jumped up ahead of that. You approved a table of organization that we can never get near because we can't hire enough people. Hiring specials or part-timers would still to be certified to be a police officer, forget the label, they'd still have to go to an academy. So if I have that seat...
See, no, Director, that's what I'm saying. When we hire the police officer, part-time police, they're already training. They carry the gun. You know, they're already trained, the police academy already. It's out there, it's there. You know, that situation what we have, crime in the certain area, you know, those kind of most people work some more time down the shore, but winter time, they have no job. Why did we hire those special group? They're already training, followed by state of New Jersey. Why we cannot use it? So we fill the manpower, what we need instead of just complain about that their police academy is so-and-so.
I understand what you're saying, but...
One thing, most of those police officers in the summer down on the shore have winter jobs. Most of them are teachers and work for the Board of Ed, which is why they have the summer off to be able to go down there. Listen, at this time in America in policing, if you ask me my recommendation, we all know what's going on. Questions are being asked that were never asked before. There were a lot of challenges. You look in a lot of cities. The Jersey City Police Department, I'm in awe of the professionalism. They need more training. They need a lot of issues. But we have... I mean, they took... You think about just one weekend, 12 firearms, 12 men with firearms, most of whom fought, ran, everything else. No allegations of force, no... They're doing a great job. I would prefer to... It's not a time to go less professional or part-time. It's a time to commit to more.
That's your order, Director. You know, so I depend on your, you know, the leadership. But now, another one is we see that one of the resolutions, which is ordinance, talk about a business curfew in those certain area. Business curfew. So limited time, open the stores like open till 11:00 PM, so-and-so. You know familiar with that?
No, with... Are we talking about a curfew for people or for businesses? Yeah.
So business curfew is one of the agendas of tonight's. If we do that, what do you believe that is going to limit a lot of problem?
Yes, yes.
Yes, can you?
Okay, folks, let's... If we're going to switch topics, then...
Yes, yes. Oh, yeah. That's your ordinance?
It's Frank Kajuski's ordinance.
But doesn't matter, he ordinance, but public safety, if you were there, he should be communicating.
He's aware of it.
Yeah.
There are locations within Jersey City that are what we call an attractive nuisance. They seem to attract and spawn a lot of disorderly conduct. And yes, it would help if we had a little control over what time they stayed open until.
Yeah, they're working pretty good. The way we put your business curfew in our area height is working very good and make much, much easier that the police officers to enforce that.
They would always... Listen, they would always have the option of cleaning up, proving that they're helping instead of hindering, and then we can always look back at it and adjust it.
Thank you, Rachel. Thank you. Can I have David Donnelly? So this is going to be...
Can I ask about Mr. Farrell? Jeremy, Mr. Farrell? I just want to ask you something because the concerned citizen gave me this before. I'd like to ask, added assessment to the City of Jersey City. O'Donnell McCord is a law firm that's supposed to represent the tax assessor. He is hired to defend the tax assessor. Why is he filing almost 400 and some odd tax appeals for whatever it is?
Sure, it's a great question.
Good question.
I just called up David Donnelly.
Can we handle that matter and then we'll come right back?
Yeah, well... I was looking to answer. All right. Director Donnelly is here for Resolution 15-86210Z. It's a resolution of the municipal council. Did you say Tunnel Lee Avenue, right? For authorizing the planning board to conduct a preliminary investigation of conditions of the Tunnel Lee Avenue light industrial area for termination as an area need of redevelopment or refiliation, correct?
That is right.
You want to speak to us or...
Just basically, what we've come across on Tunnel Lee Avenue is we're trying to maintain those uses of light industrial. That's important to us. We feel that we have the ability to create jobs over there. There are several vacant parcels as well, some that have been remediated, some that have not. And we wanted to take a look at it to see if it has the potential to become a redevelopment plan or a redevelopment area. And we want to look at that by creating a light study, just having to have a study to look at it. Therefore, we might move forward or not, but we think it's certainly worth a look and for us to investigate. If you go through that area, it... One of the things that we need in Jersey City is, you know, we have all kinds of office jobs that have come to town, but we're trying to maintain what little light industrial base we have left and we feel that's important. And so we're trying to figure out how to do that. This is one of the last remaining light industrial areas in town and we're trying to figure out a way to do that. Right now, there are several trucking firms along Tunnel Lee Avenue, which kind of makes sense, that are looking to expand. And, you know, and most of these trucking firms actually hire and employ people in Jersey City. So we thought it would be worthwhile to take a look at, and that's what we're asking the council to do, to send to the planning board to say, "Could you please take a look at this?"
Okay. I should... Is that...
It says David Donnelly on the back. David's come up here as an expert, but it was actually discussed with myself and Councilman Yun, myself in capacity and the redevelopment agency. Obviously, this is Ward D. to sponsor this resolution. And so this resolution was prepared at the... At our request at that time. I think Councilman Yun has a different request at this time. And Councilman Yun?
Actually, David Donnelly, you know, I have a same page with you. The Tunnel Lee Avenue actually is the entrance of the Jersey High and it really looks terrible. They needed some kind of improvement to require. But this time, what happened at their height, we have to understand. Central Avenue aside, the board of members tried to talk about the improvement avenue. They talked about the restaurant law, redevelopment, they will hire the marketing consulting company to improve, you know, main street. They all kind of acted pretty in, but one of the ideas that was come out as, you know, items was a redevelopment plan. Many of their redevelopment plan were to go out the street, actually, whole association, you know, block association, they up to arm. And under the community... And under the community each other, they don't want to hear the redevelopment, that they were, they hate their redevelopment word, you know, there was serious problem we come up. So actually, there's some area need redevelopment, they have to need, so what the, the community leaders they're working on in now, middle of the January, they're gonna have, you know, the public session to all the effort, Jersey City innovation teams at the plane, and all the business community leaders and the neighbors association, they're gonna all come up, like a tunnel meeting, try to talk about master plan, how we're gonna improve the height as together. You know, so instead we put your study, I think I'd like to get to put their effort also, so even though delayed one month, you know, to show the respect to community, we should be work together, you know, I think that's why I ask we draw this one, give us another monster community to put your effort, you know, to, you know, heights as a whole.
So I'm gonna, so the two of us, we met with David and, and the legal, yeah, representing the trucking firms. So, you know, this is a resolution that will call for a study, ask the planning board to study if this is an area in need of redevelopment. The upside is that there's great opportunity here. It commits nothing ultimately, like there's no redevelopment plan, no, no creating a redevelopment plan, no establishing and changing zoning, it simply starts a process and initiates something. And I would also add that if there's going to be a master plan development, that it could be very informative, a study could be, to that, that master planning process. If there's issues with regard to, and look, I don't disagree with the idea of having transparency, completely agree with that, with regard to the Central Avenue area, I know folks are, are upset about the, what happened, transpired. I'm also concerned about the idea that, I mean, we met with someone, we said that we would move forward with it, and I'm of the belief in, in terms of, while at the same time, we, we want to protect our citizens, I'm also of the belief that if we want to have business and development and investment, that one has to be, that one, that there has to be some certainty in the, in the, in the market and so forth. So if government's not certain about what the process is and how, what steps one needs to take, and so, they kind of came to us in good faith, we're hoping we would see this through, this study, then, and requested the, the two of us to, to present this. I would like to ask for your indulgence, Councilman. Let me speak with the members of, the different members of the different heights groups there, explain to them between now and Wednesday, what's, what's being proposed here, and try to explain as best as I can, that I don't think this is going to be in any way harmful or deleterious to their, their efforts.
Because, you know what, actually, your idea is great, President.
Yeah.
With all the respect, but I don't think so. You know what, actually, business, the business community, the leaders, they put their effort the middle of the January, tried to call, actually, this is good opportunity to company, for the transportation or trucking company to come up, is a good opportunity to present their idea as a community. I think there's nothing wrong with that, you know, it's only months is different, I think we gotta give some time to community also. It's a transparency is not one issue.
Transparency is great, but you also gave your words, so... I'm gonna put it out there as plainly as that, and nothing here was like not transparent about it, this was like, I just find that bad business practices to say, and you're the business man here, like, I'm sorry.
President, what?
Councilperson Coleman, I'm sorry.
Thank you, I appreciate that. I think I understand what Councilman Yun is trying to do, but I don't think he understands that this process is not going to mandate what happens. I think it would be good to bring something to the business community if they can come up with what they've looked into. If you wait a month, that means after that meeting, you still are going to have to do this research, and that's only gonna make it take longer. To me, I think it would be good for the government to bring, to present their findings and let the community review that before any decisions are made. I think that would be great. You're not making any decisions, you're just doing a study so that you can present what you found. So I think looking at it that way, it's not like they're making a decision for you, Councilman, it's like they're bringing you information to help you and your community make a better decision, that's what it sounds like to me.
Exactly, it's actually, the light study allows the city council and the plant, the planning board to make an educated decision about the economy and how it is affected over there on, on the Tonley Avenue corridor as refer, as, as within respect to the light industrial area.
It's not about making a plan.
No, it's about, it's about, it's about, it's about, it's about getting an education on what we potentially need to do, that's what it's about.
I think with all the respect of, I'm not misunderstand, we understand, fully understand, I think we understand too much, that is the problem. Let me ask you this one. You know, when I speak as a public, what is, what is major concern the public about the redevelopment plan? Because they understand the concept of the redevelopment plan the first time, but now, after that, the way the redevelopment plans, processing, study, so we all, let me make a short story. Once they designated redevelopment plan district area, the problem is that without knowing enough time to community, they continue amend the redevelopment plan based on after the community more likely benefit to developer. That kind of perception out there in the public, you know, that actually don't blame the public itself, because that's why we do that. So now, what I'm saying, we should have communicate with the community and the developer who are planning redevelopment, we're all together, so give them months to their community, and those kind of companies, whatever the trucking company come up, presented their idea, there's nothing wrong with that. And I don't want your council plan to make a phone call behind the mayor's, I'm the council and district, my issue, and speak with that, no, I think that's not fair.
As a councilman large, I'm entitled to do that.
Yes, you can do that, nothing wrong with that, but I'm sure at least, frontline councilmen bring up the objection, gives the community at least a month of time to discuss. What's wrong with that?
Let me cut to the chase here. Let me cut to the chase, which is, so, so the things that you raised about transparency and other things, I will say, Councilman, respectfully, that I think this is slightly disingenuous, if you talk to the people in the community, and I have, that yes, they would like to see transparency, and what they've, what their complaint is, is that there was a Central Avenue redevelopment plan created, which many of them feel, and have expressed, I won't name names because I don't want to... That, that they didn't know anything about it, and they felt that the Central Avenue S I D, and they will say in the same conversation, that you're very instrumental in pushing the direction of that, that it was the Central Avenue S I D that surreptitiously put together this plan without involving the community and leaving them out and leaving their voice out in that process. So, my point being is, the, the idea that there's a lack of transparency on that, I think, you know, certainly agree with that, but I think, I think it, there's no harm in going directly to those folks who are critics of that, of what's transpired to date, and asking them what their thoughts would be. Look, if they, if they, if they balk at the, at the issue, and they feel very strongly that this is going to be harmful to their, their overall efforts in some way, I'm happy to step back and say, okay, let's take another step back and take another look at this, but this is...
Okay, I, I understand the interpretation.
Councilperson, may I say something?
Yes. I just wanted to go, I just wanted to go on the record that, especially concerned since Central Avenue S I D and the Central Avenue redevelopment plan came up, I just, Councilman, I would have loved to have discussed that plan with you, it's one of the things that my agency takes, takes care of, but I didn't see, I didn't see that, that resolution or that ordinance come on until it was on the agenda. I had never even seen it before, Councilman. It would have been nice, and you obviously knew something about it, it would have been nice if you had given me a call, I would have appreciated it.
The redevelopment plan is not even, they want to just have a material to discuss, actually, planning department provide the material to discuss, not even that stage of study. We got a misunderstanding, so now, Council President?
Because I've never even heard of it before.
If you're a sponsor of that, fine, if they come up with a draft of redevelopment plan for Tonley Avenue, if have a no objection committee, if they favor, I'm supporting that, you know what I'm saying? So now, but I don't want to sponsor the bill at this point, because I ask that they give us a month's notice to community to put your effort, but if you want to do that, if you don't want to do that, you just want to do a study, but actually, we got to keep on the record, any plans of redevelopment plan, once city council prove that they're studying for the redevelopment plan, they always pass the city council, no question about it, because I'm not going to say why, but that's what they have to, probably 99% of that's what they have. So it's okay, Council President, you just a study, you want to sponsor, sponsor bill, after come back to respond for the communities, you're fine, all backed up together, okay?
We just tabled the Morris Canal redevelopment revisions, we just tabled it, because it hadn't gone to the community. It was just tabled at the last council meeting, so that's not true that it goes through every time without anybody saying anything, because it was tabled, because it didn't have community input. And until they get that, they can't put it back on, on the agenda.
I think it's on the agenda.
Right, oh, well, they must have proof that they...
Yes.
So I'm not asking a whole lot, I ask just a month's notice that the community to discuss all their things, if not, feel, fine.
Why don't you let Mr. Kavanaugh, he would like to speak on.
Bob, you want to speak?
Yeah.
We have Bob Kavanaugh, former Ward A. Councilman, and...
A good lawyer. We all know that.
Good evening, everyone. It's a little odd for me to be sitting in this chair, I'm usually sitting where Mr. Kudjuski is, but I, no, 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 I saw that movie, it's a B-movie. But I, I appreciate the opportunity. Councilman Yun, I, I, I understand your concern, believe me, from having sat at this table, I, I understand that concern, and I've had to deal with the community on a number of occasions, and I don't disagree with your concern. What, what I would promise you on behalf of the client, I would tell you this, the study is, as, as the Council President, and you and I had discussed, it's just to get a study going, because our client is looking to invest a large sum of money to expand the operation, do the jobs and everything else, but we need to know what the area can, can sustain or what have you. What I will tell you is this, as the study process proceeds, if you'll agree to that, we would agree that we would not move forward, asking the city or anyone else to move forward with the redevelopment plan either, until we came and sat with your communities, wherever you would want to have the community meetings, and go through the process and explain to them, exactly, excuse me, exactly what it is we were looking to do. Having been there, I understand that, and I don't disagree with that, I used to have those meetings all the time, but it's a process, it takes a long time, and it costs a lot of money to, to work through it. So if, if you'd meet me halfway in that respect, let the study move forward, we sit down once, you know, in a couple of weeks, a week, you let me know after the holidays, before the holidays, whenever you want to do it, I'll have my client there, and we'll go through it as we went through it with you.
So you know, there's a committee organized, a public meeting, I mean, a tunnel meeting for talk about improvement to height area, I think I have time to give you notice that, you know, when you set up a date, and then maybe attend the meetings, so give us some input, you know what I'm saying? It's a good opportunity to knows, you know, what's going on there in the community, and I don't want the people say, oh, there was some deals going on, so and so, we don't want to hear that, okay?
Yeah, I can, I will sit here and attest, wholeheartedly, there's no deal that's been made, this is just a request we made of the city, because before our client goes and expands, expands this large sum of money in, in expanding the property, we want to know what, what all the issues are going, going to be, and that's why we asked the city to, and yourself, to move forward with this.
Different community leaders, they don't want to hear the word redevelopment, period. That is the way to leave.
I, I get that, but when you're, the word redevelopment just means that we have an existing site, and we, in order to change it from what it is to something else, you're redeveloping it.
Yeah, so, you know, so it's a good opportunity to, you know, explain to people with your professionalism, to people maybe more understand the fact, so, well, you know...
But like I said, I will, I will make the commitment right here, that we will come to whatever meeting we want, and go through exactly what we went through with you, the Council President, and David Donnelly.
Yeah, okay. I have no problem, yeah, we understand.
All right, any other questions?
No.
Thank you.
Okay, let's bring up Matt Ward. Might as well knock out all these zoning and planning issues. We have 3J, this is item 3J.
Right, City Ordinance 1582. It's an ordinance of the municipal council, the city of Jersey City, adopting amendments to the transit-oriented development north zone of the Morris Canal redevelopment plan.
What was it, item?
3J. 3J.
Good afternoon. So as Mr. Coleman mentioned during the last item, there's an ordinance that was tabled for public input. In between then and now, there were two well-advertised public meetings held in the Lafayette area. One was at the Team Walker Learning Center, and another one was at a private residence that's in the Lafayette Park redevelopment area, and they're indicated on the map that I handed out. We did an exercise at the beginning of the both meetings, we had a large map, and people could volunteer to place their home, place a business or property that they owned on the map, and just to show a little bit of the, of the range of attendees that we received, it wasn't mandatory, so not all the people did that, but we had about 40 people at the first public meeting, and around 25 to 30 people at the second meeting. We went through a long presentation, as well as had an extensive Q and A, and the community was in support of the amendments that received a favorable recommendation from planning board, there was no opposition voiced, and I was able to answer all the questions pertaining to these amendments, and some that were just about the, the greater process of redevelopment plans and their community in general. With that, I submitted, there is really two, there was one ordinance before, but it was really two components, but I separated them out, and 3J and 3K are, are those ordinances. So 3J is referring to the TOD North Zone of the Morris Canal Redevelopment Plan, and it is an amendment to allow for smaller buildings on smaller lots in the TOD North Zone.
Any questions? No. Thank you for your, your work on this and making sure the community's input was heard.
That represents about 30, so I feel comfortable now with this being on the agenda. Thank you.
Great, and I enjoyed it, it was a really good, lively, good discussion, and I think everyone had a good time at these, these meetings. Can we introduce the next item?
Yes.
If there's no other questions, I'm sorry. Just to roll off of the last one, 3K is another amendment to Morris Canal. This is a, an amendment to the zoning map in that plan, and the community was in very wide support of this, it's to allow a property that is a historic building that used to have ground floor retail, currently, it's only allowed to have residential on the ground floor, the property owner requested amendment to allow him to do commercial on the ground floor. It's at the, it's face, the building faces on Communipaw, which we all know is the main street in that area, so this is very appropriate, and the community was very happy to hear that more stores would be in their neighborhood.
Okay, do you have another item?
I think the late item, or we, Ocean Avenue?
Ocean Avenue, okay.
Ocean Avenue, Ocean Avenue South Redevelopment Plan.
So this kind of comes in two parts, we have 4A, which is the second reading ordinance, and then, what is it, the late item?
And it's 3O.
3O.
There has been, as you, you may or may not know from the memo that I, that I submitted to this Ocean Avenue South item and, and previous ones... to this Ocean Avenue South item and, and previous ones, there's been a, a, there's been concern over permitting bars or not, whether or not they will be an economic driver or whether or not there'll be a quality of life concern. And I think that Councilman Gudzuski has been listening to the community and this, this item has been resubmitted.
Councilman, you want to, to amend the bars?
Yeah. The original ordinance has written that the different categories of restaurants. Originally, I thought that, that meant that one of them could have a bar in the restaurant. That's what I was like to do. That's not, now I'm told it's not correct.
It's speaking, I guess, on the behalf of the zoning officer, which I can't really do, but my reading is that the way, when we, the bars are stricken from the plan as a permitted use, restaurants can still have table service with alcohol, but they cannot have what you think of as like Lakos, which has like a bar with a bartender in it, where a bartender is giving someone a drink. So that, striking bars, that would prohibit a restaurant from having a bar with a bartender, but it would still be able to serve alcohol is my understanding.
That I know from attending one of these meetings, that a lot of people would welcome having a restaurant bar like, like a Laco. We use Lakos because it's from the area.
Right.
And we had several in the Greenville area, no longer exist, like Just Sunny's is gone and the Point was taken away from Hurricane. That type of restaurant, people were saying that's, that's what they would welcome in that. So with the bar thing, I thought that was a separate issue. So we were trying to, I was speaking with the council president and we're trying to, excuse me, sort that out.
Right. So there's a, there's been, there's a nuance of how you permit these different uses. And I think that if, for a restaurant like Lakos to exist, the best tact would be to, to avoid any sort of concern from the community and satisfy their, their, their need for a restaurant bar would be to list bar as an accessory use. That way, a restaurant could have a, a bar inside of it, but a bar like the candlelight, which is in that, that area, or used to be in the candlelight, I mean, used to be in that area on, on, I think, Gates and Ocean, no longer, could no longer exist. So a, a business where it's their only source of income is, is the, is on, on premises consumption of alcohol would not be allowed. But a restaurant with on, on premises consumption would be allowed.
It could be a BYO, but it could also be.
Actually, BYOs were in the meetings, they, those were, they, that's really, the community is really, really likes. So, yeah. So then.
Then there is for the restaurant bar.
Right.
Restaurant bar.
Yes.
So in, in order to effectuate that, as, as Matt said, there would be, so what's being introduced on first reading as a three O, as a late item, will have to require an amendment, because it's without bars, that one, that would include in section three, I'm sorry, section eight, subsection A three, under accessory uses, there would be an amendment to include bars as well as in, there's another.
The next zone, yeah.
The next zone two, which is.
B three.
B three.
Section eight.
Would be, also include accessory use bars.
And I will submit that atta, new attachment to.
And that would allow for the Lakos type establishment to be a permitted use in the redevelopment. There will have to be an amendment, so.
Just to the attachment.
What, what, what's going to happen, what should happen is that Matt will give us new ordinance to vote on on Wednesday. So we, we wouldn't have to have an actual amendment at.
I'm going to, I'm going to interrupt you because we've, we've talked this through a little bit.
Okay.
Because of the controversy that it started at the Planning Board, folks wanted it removed. It's our feeling, and we're not a hundred percent certain, that the, that folks aren't familiar with the nuance of it. They thought that they were still going to get a bar with, a restaurant with a bar if they removed bars altogether. It's our feeling that people still want restaurants with bars, but they just don't want the bar, a standalone bar, right? So what we're proposing as a strategy is before voting on three O, that we have the public hearing on four A, listen to people's comments, explain to them the nuance of adding it as a, as an accessory use, a bar as an accessory use, that that will allow for the, the Lakos or Batello's type of establishment or something over there, Sanai. And those, those type of establishments to be permissible within Ocean Avenue South, but a standalone bar would not be permitted in and of itself. And then, based on those public comments and what people give back, hopefully folks are okay with that. Then on three O, we'll make the amendment at the council meeting because, but if, if it ends up that folks are really not okay with it, I, I will defer to Councilman Gudzuski on this. I'll kind of have to get a sense of where folks are and where they fall before we actually.
We usually don't amend the first reading ordinance. That's why, that's why I was bringing that up. I mean, if you had the other version of the ordinance, the way you want it to be amended, it wouldn't have to be amended. You would, you would, like you said, you would do the.
May I ask a, a. Sure. To preempt that, that I think what I'm hearing the council president say is that we should amend the attachment before we introduce it at first reading. And that lists the accessory uses as a bar as an accessory use. But I'm not sure.
If we put it on and we bring it there to the meeting, it's, the people are presumptively going to assume that we've just made up our mind and we're going to vote for something with a bar. And that's not, not the message I want, I would like us to convey. I think Frank agrees as well, right? We're trying to be transparent and fair and, and convey that message to folks so that, because I think a lot of, there's some mis, misunderstanding about it.
Just to be clear, you don't have to, you can change the document however you want before it's introduced, if you want. So you want to have a public hearing first, and usually we would do first readings first. That's fine. You could actually have the public hearing on your document and at the second reading, public hearing phase, and then after that, vote, introduce the document however you want in its final form.
Have to look at, have to look at, vote on four A. Have the public hearing, vote on four A, vote it down, ask the council to vote it down.
I'm sorry. So then, in going through procedure is. We usually do the first readings first.
No, you would still do the first readings, they just wouldn't introduce this item.
They would then do second readings. Then after second readings, they can then decide to introduce another item to the agenda if they want to.
We'll add it later.
Add it as a late item after.
We did, we've done this once before when I was on the council. We actually deferred one item on the first readings to have after the public hearings. We've done it once before.
The intention is to get the public hearing quicks for a second reading to inform our decision on the first reading. That's the intention.
So when we're taking, when we're taking a vote for first reading, we're not going to be taking a vote on, on three O.
We won't add a three O then, until after we vote on four A.
And we'll have in hand both, one without bars and then one.
One of each.
I just like to be prepared.
Yes.
Thanks, Matt.
That covers everything?
Yeah.
All right. Thank you, Matt. We have Maureen here. You got three items, Maureen?
Yeah, three, four, maybe.
Oh, you got, I got other guys who are a little less than you. Yeah, fine.
What do you got, Maureen? Resolutions?
Uh, resolutions. They're to cancel off the balances of ten dollars or less and then to transfer our credits to operations. They are, let me just get.
J is a resolution authorizing the city collector to transfer 2015 calendar year real estate tax credits and other municipal charges, balances to operations. Ten K is cancellation of tax balances, lock cleaning charges, abatement charges, special improvement charges and credits of ten dollars or less for the tax year 2015 and prior.
Questions? What I can say that good job.
Thanks.
And BA and, you know, Maureen did a good job. So at least it, at least it looks our book looks much healthier than before, really, you know? So one is, they talk about a three point five million dollars, you know? So we have, looks like much, it looks better than before. Really, good job. Thank you for that effort.
And then the other one is the ordinance for the Newport. And that's basically on how we're allowing them in our settlement agreement to define excess profits.
First reading, just did not make it to the agenda last meeting, if you recall.
Okay. So it's being reintroduced here with the appropriate information attached. Everyone should have it. Three A.
From three A, actually, last minute, we, we bow down for the introduction. And there was certain waiting period time to reintroduction. We can just next meeting right there. I thought.
No, it wasn't introduced. So it wasn't voted down. It wasn't introduced.
It doesn't make the. It was voted to withdraw. It was voted to withdraw, was it right?
Correct. Another one, bring back again.
Because of this, you guys didn't have this. And the meeting went for.
We didn't have that. That's why we voted.
Bobby had given.
But the councilman, the councilman, Councilman Ramchell made a motion to try to put it back on, but that got, the motion was defeated.
Right.
Because the meeting went for a very long time and I sit there and ran over all the numbers, but then I had.
This was at late night.
Nobody wanted to do it. So I was like, fine, bring it back for the next meeting.
Okay, questions?
Now, now, do you want me to study?
Questions?
You know, my base story is that state statute change, you know, the definition of a, definition net profit. Before 2003, state said net profit means ABC. After 2003, statute change definition net profit, now net profit means XYZ. So because of this one, we give them tax of eight ninety-seven. Based on definition of the net profit, city of Jersey able to collect one point eight million dollars excess profit, you know, actually, city as a, and that part of I, I mentioned to that, to you and the BA and the corporate and council, great job, you know, to go after, you know, excess profit, really, I really appreciate the job. But now my concern is that they're going to willing to pay one point eight million dollars to settle the case, the city of Jersey for the extra profit. We understand. Now, if we change, they want to amend our financial agreements to change the net profit, the definition of that profit adds a 2003. Now, if we change, what is the plan coming city of Jersey? What kind of revenue wise, how much we going to lose, how much we going to gain? Can you explain to us that?
So see, what happens is their conventional taxes. Is right now, if they're conventionally taxed, basically, they're, what they're paying me in the pilot, without the excess profit exceeds what their conventional taxes are. They're right on the cusp. Keeping them on the abatement is your choice. It's three point eight million dollars. You want to look for three point eight million dollars next year? That's decision because that's the hole you're going to have. They're going to opt out of the abatement. You will not have them in next year. You will lose all that revenue that the city gets a hundred percent on. What happens is they will be conventionally taxed. You have the analysis. Their conventional taxes at fifty-one percent are only going to be, I guess we figured it out. No, this one didn't have it. But it's less, what? Yeah. No, that's not it. This is it. It's this one. So what happens is with them paying the extra, no, it's, it's actually this page. This is the analysis. You got to look at the analysis page on the three that we gave out. And it was for HP Lincoln, thirty River Court. Their conventional taxes right now, one point nine. Their payments under the abatement, if I went to twenty River Court, are one nine sixty. So they're pretty much paying more in pilot payments than they, what they would be paying under conventional taxes. So this is a decision you have to make. Allowing them to do this is buying us a few more years. Eventually, all we're doing is allowing them to take interest and depreciation as a deduction. Okay? If we don't allow them to do it, they opt out of the abatement, we're looking for three point eight million dollars in revenue next year.
When I see this one, there was seventeen percent. What they means this one?
This one?
Seventy percent. When they give us less.
Well, no, we were just, this was one. That we were looking at to try to decide whether if we were going to ask them to pay more in the percentage, but they said they didn't want to do that. That's what we did. We were doing analysis a couple of different ways, but. These are, these are actually rental properties. Our rental properties, because they're on the waterfront, bringing a lot of money. They get market rate rentals. So what they're paying in the market rate rentals based on the percentages of fifteen percent is bringing more in than what they'd be paying under conventional taxes. So this is, like I said, this is basically your decision. You know, you want to look for three point eight? Well, that's really.
How it is. It don't help down.
We don't get that money next year. You know, I'm telling you the way it is. Yeah.
You gave us, the option is to either have or not have three point something million dollars.
Your choice. Yep. And, you know, I mean, you figure out what their conventional taxes are. Take fifty-one percent of that. That's what we would be getting in. So if I looked at twenty River Court at one nine, they'd be, we, the municipality would only get fifty-one percent of that, which is, you know, a million, yeah, million bucks. That's it.
Why did you replay the same rules of what they play? Let them pay conventional tax and let them wear their, how much they have to pay. Simple. You know what I'm saying? Because if we pay now, we're going to maybe see that we're going to lose eight point, three point eight million dollars over the three project. But if they have to pay conventional tax, you know how much they have to pay?
Yeah, it's right here. It shows on your sheet. They're going to pay one point nine.
That's not the municipal side.
It's less money. It's less money than what they paying.
I mean, they're whole.
Yes. It's less. It's less. Look at it. It's less money. I did conventional taxes based on their assessment. They are paying me.
It's not the city portion.
No.
It's a whole.
That's the whole amount.
That's it.
So now. I'm going to go next step.
Yeah.
Now, that's what I wanted to say. As I say, and not only ourselves, this city council tax tape we wear there, when they do the nineteen ninety-seven, when you give tax abatement, they have to pay fifteen percent annual service charge for the gross revenue. Today, this city, this admission giveaway tax event, eight percent, nine percent, eleven percent. So we actually sell city of Jersey as bargain price.
No, not bargain.
No. So you know what, actually, this is what I'm saying. They's going to be out of the tax abatement because they only pay fifteen percent of, at the gross revenue. It's a whole lot of money. The way you say, if they go on end of the year, they are paying is more than what conventional tax. Today, ninety-seven, we give city of Jersey, of city, when they give a tax abatement, they have to pay fifteen percent annual service charge. Today, some building we gives eight percent, nine percent, ten percent. You know what is this one?
That's not part of this discussion.
No, it's not part of this. That's what I'm saying. So. Listen, as your financial officer probably you will, we give away actually.
You know what is the problem? You're talking about, but that's another.
Continue through the tax abatement.
Okay.
Annual service charge.
Let's, let's, if there are no questions with regard to this, this item.
I don't set policy, sir, okay?
We're moving on. We're moving on. Okay. Actually, yes. Folks, councilmen, please. Councilmen, folks. So I also want to bring it to everyone's attention that because of, because we did table, have this withdrawn last time, that there's a timing issue here because this has to take effect in 2016. So this will come on the January fourth meeting, which normally is just for the budget, but it'll be added as an item as well so that this, this change can be effectuated for 2016. Okay? We will have a public hearing on this ordinance at 10:00 AM on January fourth. Um, let's see. We have Director Redfield and, and Joe Cunha. Are you together or separate or? How many do you have? Oh, okay. You have a couple more than that. I don't have your sheet, Joe.
You know the contract for Starlight Electric?
Is that where you start?
Yeah, we'll start there.
Okay, so it's 10C18.
Resolution 15880, resolution authorizing the renewal of the contract with Starlight Electric for sports lighting and scoreboards maintenance at numerous ballfields for the Department of Public Works, Division of Park Maintenance.
Exercising the option for 11 of our citywide ballfield parks, it's for the scoreboards and the lighting throughout those parks, and the, the parks that we're talking about, Persian Field, Mary Benson, are all listed.
Any questions? There are none, next item?
The next one would be the renewal contract with Sintas for our uniforms. Z17. So again, exercising our option, this is for approximately 120 employees that now get uniform service from Sintas. They each get 11 uniforms, they get a cleaning on these uniforms, it's various jackets and coats that they wear. It's for, like I said, it's a renewal the option for the, for the year.
Just remind me something unrelated to this, but JCI A merger, uniforms for them, they're gonna need newly branded stuff.
And, and we've talked about that. Exactly.
Okay, great.
They, they use a different uniform contract, and I've been in a, talking with Bob Kane, John Manila, about how that's all gonna work out.
So we're working back.
Yes, we are.
So the next one is 10Z16, which is Resolution 878, it's renewal contract with Access Control Technologies.
Should, before you go, so one more thing on the uniforms, I just reminded, are these, like, for weather, for rain and snow and stuff like that, will they...
Vests and coats, yes. No shorts, no shorts, but they, they are a cleaning service, it's trousers and shirts, outdoor coats and vests.
Just the explanation JCI A expressed to me, that they didn't have that sort of weather resistant type of wear and so forth, and...
DPW workers wear, so it'll be the, the same, the same equipment and in the same uniforms. Okay, this is the resolution authorizing the renewal of a contract with Control Technologies regarding our scanning of our municipal court and the Batoon Center, it's for the security scans and the, the car arms in the parking lot. It's the final option to renew.
Questions? There are none?
Next item?
Is this? Z15?
Z15. 14. These is the emergency contracts award to Northeast Roof Maintenance.
Yes.
In connection with the emergency roof repairs at Fire Engine Company 11 and 13.
Correct. 152 Linden Street and 152 Lincoln Street, coincidentally enough. Both these roofs for our firehouses have been in poor shape, they've been leaking. Back in March of 2015, we authorized some patch up of roof repairs for Engine 13, which is on Linden, it was about $5,000 worth of repairs that were done. And then in July of 2015, this past summer, Engine 11, Lincoln Street, had some patch up repairs. Unfortunately, both those repairs did not take. This past October, leaks started happening again in both these roofs. I could not see us patching them up again and putting another 8,000 or 9,000 into patching up roofs, which needed tear off and repair, replacement. Sure.
DPW used to do most of the work. Today, we farm it out, we seem to be getting royally screwed by everybody we farm out stuff to. Don't you think now with the merger and to get more people, we should be doing a lot of stuff ourselves?
Well, I, I agree with you, and on certain things like fencing and some repairs, yes. I think something like roof repairs with a 25-year warranty, I think we need to have the right roofing company do it. It's, I think certain things, I agree with Councilman Bogiano. And I've discussed this with Bob and with John Manila, but I think something like roof repairs, we're getting a 25-year warranty, this was a, a complete tear off, replacement of all the sheathing and wood, all new coping was done. This is a big job, this is a 25-year contract. Something like this, I don't think our guys should go up and do. I think we need a professional to do a roof. That's just my opinion. I think you're getting two good roofs done finally at both these firehouses, a lot of our firehouses need repairs. There's another firehouse in, in 2016 that we wanna do, but right now, these two emergency repairs had to be done. There's gonna be ice and snow on those roofs, and we had to make the repair while we could with these few weeks of mild weather that we have. Yeah, well, the, the one roof is completely done on Lincoln Street, and the other roof should be, both should be done before Christmas Eve, weather permitting.
Thank you, thank you. Thank you for the really fantastic job as a director, deputy, blah, blah, blah. As a roofing, it's a very funny job, you know what I'm saying?
It is a funny job, that's why having both these roofs repaired at one time, and probably if I checked my records, they were repaired even years ago, so...
So my concern is that, what kind of warranty we have is this dead job?
25, this is a 25-year written warranty.
Written warranty.
On, yeah, on everything. Remember, this is a tear off, this isn't a going over another roof, this is a complete tear off, sheathing replacement, all, the, the coping and carpet walls were all addressed. So this is a job that we needed to do. The other thing is, Councilman, there's some work needed inside these firehouses that we've been putting off. We wanna, we wanna address the walls inside, just like we wanted to address the things up at Padalestree. We wanna fix the walls and the ceilings that have come down. We just can't do it till the roof is done. So now that the roof is done, we can actually invest our guys up there, Councilman Bogiano, DPW workers will go up there and make those repairs. But the roofing, we need to have a professional do it.
So it's the material and labor included?
Yes, everything.
25 years.
25 years, both roofs, correct. And they're tear offs, which means a lot. I know I have Joe here, and we discussed it in length. This is a big job, and this is a very good price. This is the lowest bid. We, we've had a couple other bids on these roofs, a year ago, when we knew that something had to be done, and it was more than this. This is a great price, we're up there, we're monitoring the job. I know the fire unions are happy that we're finally taking some, some interest in getting these roofs done the right way.
Any other questions? There are none, next item?
I think I have one more, which is, is there one more, the Bid Sync Award? What is it, Z12? Z12. And this is for Boiler Repair and H... Yeah, Amber Air.
Z12, resolution authorizing the award of contract to Amber Air Inc. for HVAC.
Correct.
And Boiler Maintenance.
This was a Bid Sync...
Reso 15.874.
Yes.
Z12.
Out of 23 vendors viewed through the Bid Sync, only two submitted proposals. This was the lowest proposal. I talked to my division of Facility Maintenance, this is approximately where we should be with this price. And it's to maintain our, at 40 different locations, our boilers and HVA systems. I know.
Come up every year.
For an extension.
Extension and the, as, extra hundreds of thousands of dollars. This is the same company?
It's the same company, Councilman. I, I did look at the bid with Director McGrath, and according to Director McGrath, they did go to each of locations, and this is a realistic figure, this should last a year. Sometimes, when we add locations, that's when the bid goes up, like the West District, the new DPW building, and that's, and sometimes they have to do an amendment to the contract to service these areas. And HVA system's a, is a big thing. I mean, our DPW complex alone, we had to come before the, the council for added monies to make a repair to that HVA system. Of course, it wasn't actually maintained the right way in the very beginning. So this is an important contract, it's about where we should be.
So, so every year, actually, I was feeling uncomfortable to give them extra hundreds of thousands of dollars. For three, last a three-month period, and also when I see the contract, we put you like a $60,000 for the part allowance, you know what I'm saying?
So... For the, for the...
Parts.
Oh, for the parts.
Parts, yes. We give the $60,000, so I don't want that they come back next year, another hundreds of thousands of dollars end of the season to recast it, because it's a country, $244,000 includes $60,000, part and labors, all, all those things include already. So I don't wanna see them...
Councilman, when you raised that point last time, I worked with my fiscal officer on that specific complaint that you made, and it was a concern of mine also. So I'm very aware of them coming again for an extension for more money, and I worked with my fiscal officer and Director McGrath to make sure that they're right where they need to be with their, with their bid.
Okay.
Councilman Ramchell?
Uh, Director, I'm just gonna go off a little bit, you just mentioned the West District, can you speak about that? What, what's the status with that?
The West District? We, uh, the police have been instructed to start packing, and we are hoping that it'll be operational on December 28th. The move will be this month. If there's a little bit of delay, then we might just go to January 4th, but, you know, it's happening in less than 30 days.
We actually been starting to move some of the furniture into a swing place, space by Liberty Storage, so we can swing it into the new... Well, that was, um...
That move was canceled.
Couple weeks. Couple weeks ago.
It was a dedication, because it was the anniversary of...
Right, correct, Councilman Levaro.
Public anniversary.
Yes, sir.
The other night I was at the police meeting.
Yeah, I got the information about four o'clock, so...
All right. No further questions, thank you. Keep the good work.
Resolution number Z13?
Z13, it's Resolution Number 15875, it's a resolution authorizing the award of contract to Gen Electric for the Traffic Maintenance 2016 Project, 16-003T for the Department of Administration, Division of Architecture Engineering, Traffic and Transportation. Joe?
Okay, yes, the time has come to... Rebid this contract, as you all may or may not know, Gen Electric is who we've had for the last couple of contracts, and have been doing a commendable job with upkeeping our signals in our school zone beacons, as well as some of our sign work. Just about anything traffic control related, aside from striping. This year, we got a second bid. Many years, we don't, we only get one bid. This year, we got a second bid. The second bid was one, nearly 1.2 million dollars higher. So this bid came in line with the last two, and we, for those reasons, we feel that we should continue what we have going and award the contract to Gen Electric again for the same work. Any questions on that?
So never has a green light to crosswalk, you know what I'm saying? But I don't know why they're not able to correct the problem, you know? So I'll literally give to all the list, you know, that area is a problem. Other than that, they seems like response time is very quick.
So Central Avenue?
Yeah, Central and the Bow Street. So never has a green light for the crosswalk, always red.
Across?
Crosswalk, yeah. So I was wondering, you know, they went there many times, but I don't know what was the reason they cannot have the...
It may be a faulty pedestrian head. It's, the hand is always up for the pedestrian?
Think you can get them to put the lights in sync?
I'll find out, exactly what it is, okay?
Baldwin Avenue, somewhere, I call Monty all the time. They don't, you know, being honest with you, you call, call, Monty does a great job, I'm not saying Monty, but as far as I'm concerned, they should be in the city synchronizing these lights, the traffic is horrendous.
Yeah, some area, yes. Okay, other than that, we save 1.2 million dollars, cheaper than other company.
That's correct. Uh, I'm gonna skip with the next item, I'm gonna cover one for Brian Weller, it's also engineering related, Z26. Yeah, it's, it's also DPW related as well.
It's Resolution 1588, resolution authorizing the award of professional service contract to KS Engineers PC in connection with retaining wall assessment at River View Fisk Park, renovations project number 2015-021 for Department Administration, Division of Architecture Engineering, Traffic and Transportation. Joe?
Okay, so essentially, we have here in this part, River View Fisk Park, we had a questionable retaining wall. And what I mean by questionable, we wanna put a, I believe it's a gazebo, just behind this retaining wall. We don't know that the retaining wall will be able to sustain the pressures put on it by the weights of the gazebo and the gathering crowds. So we felt it best to solicit quotes from our shortlist of engineers, following the fair and open process, and received three. The lowest being KS Engineers PC for $19,700, and we're recommending award of the contract to review the stability of the wall and make recommendations, including a cost estimate, as to whether the wall will require improvement and to what extent.
But now, thank you for your job, this is what we pay the River View Association, we waited for a long time. But now, only work behind the gazebo or Holland Street, the stairs go down from, you know, the other area. I, I think, you just know what area we're gonna do that, do you have any diagrams for that?
I don't have any with me, but I could get Brian Weller to get back to you on that.
Please, because they're talking about the Holland Street to make like another open space. That area will have to be evaluated, the situation in the world, so I hope that include all those things, you know, instead of separate.
Okay.
Yeah, because the world has some areas actually is dangerous, so those areas, and from the path, they have another, like a stair down to the Holland Street, those area actually has a problem too. So while, you know, it's there, you know, if they do all those things, much easier to, you know? So please keep on, and I like to know exactly where, so maybe we can add a couple more, you know?
I'll have Brian Weller give you a call, and he'll give you full explanation on that.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay, and my last item, Z20, Resolution Z20.
Z13, 10Z1521.
Okay. I'll remember that one. 10Z20, Resolution 15882. It's a little hostile. Uh, resolution declaring AJM contract is in default and terminating its contract with the City of Jersey City for a project known as resurfacing of various streets, 2014 NJ DOT Project Number 14-003E, and resurfacing of various streets, 2015 Capital Project Number 15-001E. Joe?
Okay, yes, we have a contractor who began and nearly completed a contract worth, I believe it was 1.7 million, somewhere in that range, never finished it, and we subsequently, in the middle of that contract, awarded an eight-point, I'm quoting numbers here, but I have them here. Over 8 million, well, it was seven and change, but the total on the resolution was over eight. With contingency. As you all have been waiting patiently for those roads to be paved, you'll notice that none were done. Wasn't even started.
And the BA and the Law Department will detect action like this, so, so about time, you know, really.
Yes, absolutely.
Because we want to commend Kibbily, he's been all over this, he's, you know, he's done Yuman's job in getting us to this point right now, so I just wanna acknowledge Kibbily, he's been very good in getting... Documenting the, the default measures here.
Councilperson Coleman?
Zero.
Zero.
Well, I just wanna clarify that there's two contracts that we're gonna declare them on, of default of here. One, we gave them only 79,000 and change. There is question as to whether we're gonna pay them the balance of, of work completed. That's gonna be up to the Law Department, the Engineering Department, the BA, and we're gonna sit down and go over this. The process starts now. But it starts here, and then we could get the ball rolling to get these things, probably rebid, is what we're gonna recommend, and hit the ground running as possibly, it's definitely gonna be more than one contract, maybe as many as four contracts simultaneously in the spring, so that all sections of the city are being started at the same time. Trying to make up some time. It will be, but we'll be very careful about the way we...
Really, good job.
Great job.
Yep.
Uh, and just a question, you get the email from the state on 139 last night?
Uh, I didn't get it last night, no. Last I heard, at the last community meeting, was that they were...
It cost 200 people, evidently, they don't wanna listen.
Yeah, I, I don't know what else to do.
Well, I know, you know the answer.
Uh, we're talking about the closure of Palisade Avenue and the impending, I'll call it doom. They extended it a month on us, yeah. They extended it a month, but we would, we would like, at an absolute minimum, for them to extend it until they open Oakland Avenue. But we can't seem to get them... But, uh, we can't seem to get them to budge on that. Uh, I've actually recommended that they start the other two further west, uh, and leave Palisade alone, so that it's gonna be only one closure and everything else is open and wider. But they've, uh, reneged on that as well. Uh, our only hope is that after the holidays, they decide to push it back again.
And they lied at the meeting about the, uh, Skyway, they said it's gonna be finished in two years, the paper the next day had a big article, twenty twenty, so they lied like crazy.
It's, it's a difficult situation, to say the least.
They lied to two hundred people that are very aggravated right now.
Yes, it is.
Okay.
Oh, Russ?
No, that's all.
No.
Thank you.
Can I get this, uh, can I, I'd like to ask this question to the attorney, uh, Mr. Farrell, so I can get this out of the way. A gentleman gave me this today, what is this all about, where the person that's supposed to be defending the assessor files lawsuits, I understand for quite a few people, this gentleman told me today, O'Donnell McCord Law Firm, how are they saying to people that did improvements, they're not gonna raise the, uh, the assessments on their property? What's this, this is wrong.
Truthfully, um, before we even start.
Uh, if you have the gentleman's name, I'm happy to reach out to them, and if.
No, because he's not, he doesn't wanna, well, people. No, he just, uh, I was handed the paper because he said it's gonna probably be a couple million dollars, he's paying high taxes, and what are we doing? We're hurting once again the people that live in the city with homes. Yeah, I have a couple of copies I sent, you want one here?
Sure.
Uh, but, I think it's wrong.
You send a copy over, is there anyone else at the house?
I'll give him a copy, I'll give a counsel, I'll be inviting a coun, a counsel later on. But this letter was sent out, and this is wrong.
So you can.
This is, uh, if this, if it's being paid by this city, defending the assessor, he shouldn't be doing this.
All right. So you ready for my response?
Yeah, I'm ready.
Okay. Uh, this is one of those situations where, um, throughout our tax year, we do what's called added omitted. Added omitted is when we adjust our individual residence property taxes because of some sort of triggering event. They pulled permits for renovation, um, you know, uh, change of use, these types of things, a tax abatement expires, things of that nature. In this case, there was a series of added omitted done, um, that, when we looked at them, we felt that the process itself wasn't up to what we would want it to be. Some of these, uh, properties have legitimate triggering events, and will have to be looked at again. Um, but what we found was, when they were done, um, there was too much exposure on the city's end based on arbitrariness, and given the number, we were concerned with what that would ultimately mean for the city. And so, we asked for Donald McCord, who represents the city, to take this action, we're gonna wind it back, and then we're gonna look at these properties again, and, and make sure that the process is as thorough as we would want it to be.
And you're telling me anybody that does improvements now is not gonna get a tax increase?
That's actually not what I said at all, councilman, if you heard what I said very specifically.
Well, one of this that won't be turned down.
What I said very clearly is that we looked at the process in these instances, we weren't happy with it, so we're winding it back, and then we're gonna look at them again and see, uh, exactly where we wanna be.
Yeah, I think there's another reason for this. Listen, also while, while we're talking about it, for two, over two years now, we're talking about full-time aides, and, you know, Jerry McCann said something great years ago, he said, I can get the assembly to do anything within a few days, and he did. We have gotta change this system here, when people look at all these pages here, stacks of paperwork that's coming in, that's why this city is, is the City of Jersey City is a mess.
I'm a hundred percent on board with you, I would love to see.
Well, in two, we're over two years, and Rolando, you said you were gonna do some, let's get it done.
But I would say that the assembly is somebody.
I mean, the hiring people, uh.
They have their own independence, but.
Councilperson Coleman?
I'd just like this, is Paul Twenty Five Ocean Avenue here?
Yes.
I would like to, okay, all right.
Jeff, I'd like to talk about ten Z twenty two. This is the city's prescription plan recommendation to the council. You know, this is done through a, an RFP process. Prescription plan is available to the city employees, its dependents and retirees. To guide us through the process, you know, we have AccuSure, who represents us as our, our broker on these medical type issues. Jay McManus, uh, is here from AccuSure, he and his staff have gone through, uh, helped prepare the RFP, helped analyze it, and, uh, and have come here with a recommendation. Uh, there were four bids that were submitted, two of them were rejected by, uh, purchasing for violations of various purchasing rules, which then the analysis became between two companies, uh, Express Scripts and ProAct. AccuSure's analysis is attached to this, uh, to resolution, and the recommendation, uh, for, for the city, for the city council to entertain would be Express Scripts, which is our current provider, for another three-year contract. Uh, any specific questions, I'll allow Jay to kinda address the, the analysis that was done, but as you can see in both, uh, there are two analysis, ones on the, uh, active employees, and then a second one for those Medicare eligible, right?
Correct.
So, you know, the, the total spend over the three years, you see the numbers kinda close, but still favors ESI, but on those Medicare eligible, uh, the, the projection based on discounts is significantly better from Express Scripts, hence the recommendation for Express Scripts. Any questions for, uh, Mr.?
Chris, question. Councilperson Coleman, you.
I have a problem sending them and getting it mailed back, that's what I don't like, because sometimes it doesn't come back, or sometimes it comes and you have to get on the phone and discuss, I didn't receive it.
The mail order you're talking about?
Yeah, that's what this is, right?
Please, this is part, is the, uh, going to the pharmacy or the mail order, the mail order is part of our contract, it's not so much the pharmaceutical company issue, it's part of our city policy, it's been negotiated in our union contracts, you know, we find the mail order is, is more discounts and more savings to the city.
To the city.
For the city.
Okay.
And it's also cheaper for the employee. Yes, sir?
This is very similar, you know, it's a consumer company, we pay by fee, fee or they charge a fee based on, say, a total premium, what is the?
They, they, we, I wanna take this.
Yeah, if I can, councilman. We're, we're paid on the prescription drug program on a, on a fixed amount per claim that's processed, um, we're, we're not affiliated with Express Scripts or any of the other respondents. Um, so, so regardless of who responds, it's not based on premium per se, it's based on claim count, so that kind of takes the potential to recommend a higher, um, priced respondent out of the mix for us, we're just paid on the number of claims that are processed. Again, that's not, that wouldn't be influenced by either respondent.
This one, just one question, so in other words, you get commission based on claim, correct?
Correct, a, a fixed dollar amount per claim.
Okay, how much is that?
A dollar thirty.
Dollar thirty four, so in other words, when I get your prescription, I mean, the drop from the medication from the Express, and every time I get, you get dollar thirty, correct?
Correct.
Okay, so now, my next question is that, so it doesn't impact the total, pre, eighty seven million dollars, what we paying the?
It's built into that.
Yeah, all right, okay. And that's the cheapest one, basically?
Yes, I, I can just elaborate on what, on, on the financial analysis, we did a qualitative analysis of each of the respondents, and the two, uh, that, that responded and were now rejected, they're both qualified respondents. In terms of a financial analysis, there's a, a number of components that go into the pricing, uh, we take a live claim file over the most recent twelve months, we then cast these discount factors that are proposed and guaranteed by each of the respondents against the actual claim experience, and do a projection. So, uh, the result of that projection was that Express Scripts, which happens to be the incumbent, uh, is coming in roughly six percent less expensive than the other respondent in year one, six percent in year two, and eight percent in year three. So, uh, again, the qualitative aspects being equal, uh, based on the financial, um, analysis, our recommendation is to continue the contract, or at least authorize the city to, uh, enter in negotiations for, uh, continuation.
So how much we pay less if the commission, the company?
Um, actually, our, uh, our contract has a built-in reduction in commission, so effective January one sixteen, our, our income goes to a dollar twenty per claim, from a dollar thirty.
So they, gonna be go up?
No, actually, our, our revenue will probably go down as a result of that, um, uh, that reduction in, in our income. Again, we're not affiliated with either of those, we're, we're paid as an independent.
So another question is that, when I see that they provide this some information here, so how to understand, let me ask a few questions.
Sure.
You know, the future references, so we, when I see this paper, I can understand. Brand and the seventeen point twenty five, and the ProAct is sixteen point twenty five, and the variety of six point, what they means a seventeen point twenty five, what is the percentage, what they means?
So there's a, there's an average wholesale price, which is essentially pure retail that a drug, um, costs, and in the example you gave, seventeen point two five percent and sixteen point two five respectively, those are the discounts that each of these companies are guaranteed to the fixed retail price of a particular, uh, brand drug. So in this particular instance, Express Scripts is guaranteeing for each of the periods shown to discount the fixed retail price of a drug by seventeen and a, and a quarter percent. Uh, ProAct, which is the other respondent, guarantees a discount of sixteen point two five on that retail, on that retail brand.
Okay, so now, how about the dispensing fee, what they means the dispensing fee?
Uh, the dispensing fee is the fee that's charged by each of these, uh, vendors for the process of actually dispensing the drug at the pharmacy.
I see.
Councilman Ratchell, you have a question?
Yeah, um, I actually, uh, to the B, um, I know you said they have nothing to do with, uh, X, Express Script.
I didn't, yeah, I don't know, I don't know.
But Express Script, I, I, I agree with Councilman Coleman, because Express Script, now, it's not like Walgreen, where you, where you could go and pick up, you, uh, you could go to Walgreen and you could go and pick up your prescription, you gotta mail it, and then they mail it back to you. I'm not gonna mention, but there is a, a, a few people.
It's only on maintenance drugs, not every prescription, only on maintenance drugs.
Yeah, 'cause a lot of people get the drugs, and they're, and they're just lying there in front of, in the door and stuff like that, and, and I don't think that's safe.
Another question is that, you know, I'm not finished yet.
I haven't paid full price three times before.
Ninety-eight dollars for one prescription, because they claimed they mailed it, I claimed
I didn't get it, you know, it's like, so I just pay now, I'm not going through that, I'm not gonna have a.
Is it gonna cost the city more money for, for them, for us to, like, go get, like, Walgreen and write it, or we will put your prescription, you have to.
You know, why can't Express Script open up a place here?
Yeah.
Where, or, or, why do we have to have it mailed?
Again, that's not, that's not Express Scripts mandate, that was a thing we've negotiated with our unions to get a cheaper price.
Now, is it mandated by the union to do this, uh, direct mail?
No, it's negotiated, we, the city proposed it.
I'm against the mailing drugs. So, order to ship at sixty dollars, that's one of the choice, okay, so understood, now, another one is that rebate, what they means a rebate to me here?
So a rebate, not a great term, but, um, it, it's manufacturers of brand drugs, in order to incent, um, usage of certain brand drugs, provide higher rebates to these PBMs. Um, those rebates are then passed on to the city, so you see the rebate guarantees here, so each of these respondents are guaranteeing a dollar rebate amount, as shown here, per brand claim. All of that's included in the analysis, as part, as part of the final product in doing the, the spend that the city's likely to incur year over year.
So we can ask from the public place of city council?
I'm pretty sure, maybe some, except a few council people, understand this one, I think most of council people don't understand, I try to print record to understand everybody, when you say council person, receive this stock, at least understand what it is. I can ask personally by phone call, but I like to share with every council people knows that when they get dark message at their hand, at least knows what they're talking about, you know, so, that's what I ask you, so just be patient. So rebate, that's what it is, okay, now.
Councilperson Coleman?
Brand ninety, I'm not finished yet, what they means a brand ninety?
Okay, that's, that's a ninety day supply.
I, so there's a distinction in pricing that some of the respondents have between, uh, retail thirty, most of the drugs that are non-maintenance that you go to get filled would be for something at thirty or less days' supply, so retail ninety would be another degradation, another, uh, classification of drugs, where those drugs are, are prescribed for a ninety day supply and purchase at retail. Far fewer of those scripts are issued, because generally a ninety day supply would be, um, would be a maintenance drug, and it's usually filled through mail order.
Okay. Councilperson Coleman?
What can, business manager, this is directed to you, what can the council do about changing it from being mailed to us, what can the council do?
Can I please, I'm, I'm just asking, if this is not approved, then the effective date is January first, what are our options for our employees if this should not be approved?
If they won't have a prescription plan on January first?
We don't have any o, options of, uh, temporary renewals or?
We could ask Express Scripts to extend their contract.
I, I'll, I'll, I'll say, my, I just recently got on the program as well, um, after I left New Jersey City University, where I had my coverage, it, it was, I thought it was abysmal, awful, like, trying to sign up and, and get my, uh, my stuff by mail, I can't imagine what employees have been going through, um, and I haven't heard complaints, to be honest with you, I haven't heard complaints, um, but I, I'm wondering if that's more just a, a sense of resignation, that like, I can't deal with this anymore, 'cause, I mean, I fought through it on phone for days, hours at night, calling up at like, two AM in the morning just to get through and things like that, and be able to have a, a meaningful conversation with someone.
Don't file a claim that you need to.
Yeah, it was, it was awful, and I would like us to just at least reach out to the union leaders, ask them about their, what their general satisfaction is with this, at this point.
Also find out what the cost savings is, just so we see if it's worthwhile.
I agree.
And why don't we try to get a rep from a Press, Express Script to talk us about the customer service side, and if there's something that can be done.
I agree.
What I should say is that this is good for the city, but not good for the people who use it, you know what I mean? In other words, it's just like having index costs for taxes, to me, you know what I'm saying? It's not user friendly.
I get saving money, um, I, I just, it's not just about, it's not about me, I won't make it on me, but I can just imagine, I recently had a heart attack, a minor heart attack, um, I can just imagine how frustrating must be for an employee with health issues and so forth, to try to get the kind of medicines that they were looking to get, I had the, the worst time, worst experience ever, I've never had it this difficult, this difficult ever in my lifetime.
I want to just shit with that, well, I don't get my medication, I have to take it, so, my doctor is not open at one o'clock in the morning, I have to go to the medical center, emergency room, and sit in there for three hours to get a prescription, because you know you don't get a prescription unless you're seen by the doctor, yeah, I sat in medical center until two o'clock in the morning, and then got a prescription and left and went to Walgreens and paid ninety-eight dollars for the medicine while I waited to file a claim that I hadn't received it. To me, that's just a bit much, I, I can't do it anymore, so I just pay, you know, so I don't even use Express Script anymore.
If I can address just two of those items, uh, the first is that, um, our organization has an inbound, um, customer service number that, that we've really instituted to address the issues, because.
There's forty-five minutes.
These, at, at Express Scripts, I agree, these PBMs, they're, they're very large organizations, their client service, um, uh, is, is, is less than optimal, so to, to assist.
Who wants to go through that, and they're already said?
Absolutely, councilman, to, to assist in, in, um, in working through those problems and issues, our organization has now an eight, an eight hundred number, much smaller, much more client-friendly to support that process. The second thing we've done to, uh, try to compel Express Scripts to improve their service, um, we've gotten a new rep, uh, new representation team in place, the, uh, representative that will be handling the city's account also is a senior manager at Express Scripts, responsible for the state, I, I think those two things will go a long way to improve the service.
So, you know what, as you heard the complaint.
Yeah, abso.
If we pay eighty-seven million dollars a year, next year we gotta pay eighty-nine, third year we're gonna pay ninety-one million dollars, I think a people of Jersey City, work with government, deserve some kind of a service. Thirty, we're gonna pay ninety-one million dollars. I think a people of Jersey City, work of government, deserve to some kind of a service.
I agree.
You know what I'm saying? Their service is something we can feel it. You know, we can say, oh, they're all the problem where we complain solved. You know, something you have to build a system, you know, I had mentioned to them, I don't know what kind of commission you make by through that. I don't know what kind of perception they feel. You know, I, I don't know, that's not my business. But at least when they collect eighty-seven million dollars, they should have more friendly service provided to city. I'd like to come up next time, you know, the, this is, uh, I don't know what we have to do with the BA, what, come up some kind of plan, how can input the service you can provide. Well, they thought of at least one agent in the city hall, you know what I'm saying? So instead go around like a crazy, at least they come to the city hall, they can contribute just provide the service. They should do something other than that, uh, we will feel comfortable, even though we pay eighty-seven million dollars for something we cannot fully use that. I think that's not fair, right?
I, I agree. I would suggest that.
Uh, in order, in order to communicate that directly, uh, we have at some point, um, on this agenda, one of the, uh, ma- senior directors at Express Scripts, um, so, so that in a public forum, we can air those grievances as well.
Can we hold this one, resolution hold till next council meeting?
January first effective date.
January first, while we already have the last minute. So we lose that, yeah, our time, you know, basically come, actually come October, you know.
Well, actually, we did. We had to throw out the biz because the, the submissions were apples to oranges comparisons, so we haven't bid it out a second time.
But we can see some points, too. I think we already invite the next council meeting to come up some kind of plans. If somebody had to wait forty minutes on the phone to get the service, I think that's not good.
I agree, and if, if, um, if, uh, it makes sense, we'd like to bring, assuming that, uh, we move forward with Express Scripts, uh, we'd like to, to bring, uh, management in, uh, to articulate, uh, a, a plan to address these issues.
Yeah, what, what's that? That is a special four number for Jersey City.
Absolutely.
So now just bring up the manager here. I'd like to, they bring up the manager with a plan to provide those, okay?
Yes.
To improve eighty-seven million, that's a lot, lot of money.
Yeah, a lot.
Okay, please.
Counselor, one, uh, one, I would agree with, uh, Councilman Young. On, uh, item like this, we should get this like for the previous meeting, so we could have like a presentation today of what's going on. I agree with Cooperation Council, and also I will say this, that, um, I totally disagree with, uh, drugs being mailed in back and forth and left on people doorstep, not in the mail box, and that's unsafe. That's, that's one thing. And, uh, my last, my last point is that we will like, myself, Councilman Coleman, if there is someone could come in and we will make ourselves available and have a meeting with us to explain to us why they dropping off the drug, not put it in the mail box, number one. And number two is that why it takes so long? For the medication to, you gotta call two, three times. Council President and I, and I just remembered, recall, that we had this conversation, but three months ago.
If it didn't have to use it then.
A little less than that, but, yeah.
See, you have to use it then. See, you have to use it now and he's...
Yeah.
We had this conversation, I was using it.
Because people complain, city employee complain, city employee complain. They don't wanna call the BA, they don't wanna, they, they scared. So what they do, they complain to us, this is what you guys voted on, and this is what happened. And the contract is coming up again, and now here, here it is. So we have to, I know that January first, we have to vote on it now. It's important that we vote on it January first. However, does it have to be three year on January first? Why can't it be one year?
Then you won't get the same discounts.
So any cases like, like you can't win. So, well, we need to have a meeting with them. We really need to have a second meeting.
And we could, we could change the policy on mail order. You know, that's something you gotta strongly feel about. That doesn't affect the contract because then we just pay brand generic.
So, so listen, we gotta save tax paid dollars. Eighty-seven million dollars is a lot of money, okay? Just our, which is very simple, improve the service.
I agree.
Next council meeting, one, next council meeting, I like you, and the you, not only individual council, I like as response as public, like we like to keep it here. You know, come up, explain the plans, how you came through the service. That's all we need. And the, how many claims we have that year, last year, drug claim to the company?
I'd say fifty-six thousand.
How many?
Fifty-six thousand.
I'm gonna say fifty-six thousand. Don't hold me to that. It could be slightly more than that. I would have to go check my records.
Fifty-six thousand?
Yes.
Claims.
Claim.
Claims.
Fifty-six thousand scripts filled, and again, that number may be slightly low.
Okay.
I could back into it if you, if you have an hour.
So, so please, okay?
I, I understand.
All right. It's not hard question we ask.
It's absolutely reasonable.
They can do that.
Appreciate your input.
Counselor, first call me?
So you can explain to me why is this? When I first started taking medication under this plan, they allowed me to go to my pharmacy and pay two dollars, and I got my prescription. They allow that for two times because that's how long it takes to, to get signed up.
Right.
My question is, why can't we continue to do that? In other words, why can't we go to our own pharmacy?
That was our policy. That was the city's plan.
That has, okay.
That's not the new Express Scripts. That's what management directed.
All right.
Okay, any more questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
You too. Thank you.
Okay, Ocean? We're going from the top, from the top. Yeah, we're gonna go through it. Is this part of the, okay, you wanna do that internally? Come on up, guys.
Because I'm happy with what they did, and I just wanna be able to express that. And they may have to come back on Wednesday, you know, so.
Now, I'm going to, it's a second reading, this are the table item, and the first reading I didn't find.
It's a three F. So we're gonna go back to the second reading, uh, the tabled item, rather, right?
So that's why I want them to do that tonight, so I don't know how, I want them to make their presentation of where they stand out, that's what they've done, the meetings that they've had and the satisfied seniors, so we can determine. And when they leave here tonight, they'll know how we're gonna move forward with putting their item back.
Your floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, good evening, everyone. Uh, my name is, uh, Bill Harla. I'm, uh, with the Law Firm of Dakota, since Patrick and Cole. I represent the Michaels Organization. Um, and, uh, since the last meeting, I guess the last meeting, this item was tabled. So, um, in response to various comments made in the public session, uh, by members of the public. And, uh, since then, uh, Michaels collectively has devoted dozens and probably hundreds of hours to try to address some of the questions, uh, raised at, uh, that session and also to, uh, make a thorough examination of some of the issues raised there. So, uh, tonight, uh, regarding the operation of the building and, and, um, the nature of the improvements, it would be authorized and paid for by the tax abatement, if in fact granted by the council. So as part of that process, we did engage in a lot of fact-finding. And, um, this evening with me are Nick Cangelosi, who's right here, who's a Development Officer for Jersey City for the Michaels Organization. In addition, uh, is, um, Mario Milano, who is the, um, Regional Property Manager for, uh, the, um, uh, operational, uh, maintenance arm of Michaels. Also, uh, Ms. Nina Parker, um, she's right there. She's the Community Manager for, uh, Ocean Avenue, Ocean Towers. And also Mr. Eddie Jackson, who's the Building Maintenance Supervisor for the building. And, uh, last but not least is my, uh, partner, Matt Karenberg, who's sitting over there in case we get into any technical questions, more technical, perhaps about the nature of the financial agreement that's proposed. So that's who's here, and to answer your question, Councilwoman, I'm gonna let Nick sort of go through, what we've done collectively, uh, and also in terms of having, uh, meetings with the building and other types of inspections and things like that.
Yes, Councilwoman. Certainly.
I'd just like to say that Councilwoman Waterman. I had already done a physical inspection at the building. I'm satisfied and happy with the things that they said they were gonna do. Councilwoman Waterman has physically been to the building and interviewed, uh, residents of the building. And we are happy with, now that they have notified the building and met with the building, we are happy with what they're planning to do. So how do we bring this item back to be voted on by the council? You, you don't, you already went into the presentation. If they have to do it at council meeting, that's okay. But I'm saying that we're satisfied with what they did, and how do we get that item?
Technically, how we do it is, uh, there's a tabled item, and then there's a slight tweak to that item. So we would probably vote to untable that item, then do a four amendment. That four amendment, uh, can then become the item to be voted on for a second.
Will you guys tell me how that, to do that at Wednesday's council meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
My question is, if we do a four amendment, do we have to... Do we have a public hearing on the amendment?
It's a, it's, 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 it's not a material change, the amendment we're talking about. It's actually clarifying, um, their obligations to hire, uh, local diverse, uh, labor on the project, uh, which is in line with what our policies always are. Um, it's just because of the nature of the project, they're gonna, we're gonna hold them to the HUD obligation as opposed to the city obligation because the HUD obligation is more stringent and authoritative.
I'm so glad you're the Councilwoman. I'm so happy, you know, it's kind of... But I hope they're happy, those tenants are happy, that's what I, you know, they are happy about, I hope. So now, my next question is that this project, get nineteen seventy-two, they get a tax abatement. At that time, you guys took over nineteen eighty-three, nineteen eighty-three, right? Correct? Yeah, nineteen eighty-three, why eighty-two?
Seventy-three, eighty-two.
Yeah, eighty-two. Okay, when you take over nineteen eighty-three, because we don't have that old documentation, annual surcharge, how many percent do you pay annual surcharge? I mean, fifteen percent?
Fifteen, yes.
I'd like everybody here that is councilmembers, really, even nineteen seventy-two, affordable housing units, when they, this city give tax abate to affordable housing, they charge fifteen percent for annual gross revenue. Today, you guys are looking for six point two eight.
Uh, Councilman, so what we...
Well, basically, we're, um, agreeing to is we're paying no less than what we paid in the prior year at the fifteen percent, which is equivalent... Which is, which similar to, which is a hundred and thirty-eight thousand dollars. However, under the tier program in that particular district, it's six point two eight percent. So we're still, we're still subject to the fifteen percent calculation that was done prior.
That's what I'm saying. That's why I'd like to revoke the old country, want a new tax abate because new tax abate policy benefit to, far more benefit to you guys than what old tax abate with the financial government. So you know what? It's bothering me so much, really. It's not equal with you because of the way they may have set up the tax of the policy, so generous with the tax, I mean, the developer. I think this is the issue, because when I look at this old financial government tax abate, they're fifteen percent, twelve percent, forty percent. Today, we charge six percent, eight percent, you know?
I'd like to respond. Let me respond to that for you.
It makes me sick in my stomach, you know?
Thirty years ago, the rent was fifty-five dollars for an apartment, so fifteen percent of fifty-five dollars, you get the same amount that you get six percent.
Councilwoman Diana, don't you understand that the numbers, you got nothing to...
Councilman, show some, uh, respect for your colleagues.
Thirty years ago, they are far exceed that amount thirty years later. You could, I had an apartment for thirty-six dollars in low-income housing, and today that same apartment is sixteen hundred a month. That's the difference in the six percent and the fifteen percent. Fifteen percent of ten thirty years ago and six percent of one hundred thousand gives you the same amount.
You know, it's a...
It's a forget it, you know, it's a forget it. Okay, it's okay.
I just remember we were talking about this and debating something else.
Yes, it's become just, it's, it's not the specific item we're talking about at this point. We're talking about a general policy decision.
I'm talking about this item right now.
I know.
I'm just talking about this item.
So if there are no specific questions related to this, the, the intention here is, the, the amendment that comes with three F, when we, if... What's being proposed is to untable... I'm sorry? Yes, so what's being proposed is we'll untable the item that's on the, uh, tabled agenda, which would be...
Eleven J.
Eleven J. We would amend it to include, um, section three, um, HUD requirements, is that what it's called? Section three HUD requirements for, uh, for hiring, um, for the work, uh, for the construction work. And then, um, that would be untabled and amended and take a vote, final vote and amendment on that. And withdraw this item. Correct.
Withdraw three F.
So this is gonna be redrawn.
But the attachment to three F is essentially what the final document will be.
Okay.
Okay? You know, it's not your fault, you know.
Okay, so there is...
Some questions? No more?
From the top.
We're gonna go from the top. Thank you, gentlemen.
Three B.
Yep.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, three, three B is a five-year tax exemption for ninety Columbus Drive. Any questions on that?
Yes, this is another sample that they can able to build, they can able to build, building downtown, building in the downtown without tax abate, long-term tax of five years of tax abatement. Even though they build it, uh, the building in downtown with five years of tax abate, still is profitable.
Still is what?
It's profitable. They have to make money. And we have no reason to give the thirty, twenty-year tax abate. This shows, uh, obviously, this project, they able to build a five-story building, you know?
So I think, I think it shows evidence that the tax abatement policy is, uh, is having its impact, which is in these areas in downtown, which we don't think needs this, but when we've put the, the incentives in place, we've demanded affordable housing and other incentives, and they say, well, as you said, yes, we don't need to install affordable housing. We're just gonna build and we're gonna make a profit anyway. And we're gonna get the five-year abatement, which we pretty much give to every, every developer that goes out there. So I think it proves the point that things are working well in this regard.
They able to build fifty-three, five hundred thirty-nine market price rental, they can build, and they did last year, too. You know what that means there?
It's working, yes.
It's working, right?
It's working. That's great.
It's working, it's working, right?
Policy's working.
This is not happened two years or ten years ago. It's happened now, and the, now, in two thousand fifteen, and this council in two thousand fifty, we give away large tax abatements.
We came out twenty-five year and thirty year abatement.
They can build five years, and we have no reason to do the twenty-five.
Twenty percent of affordable housing.
Okay, but yeah, no two nations.
Thanks. Those two first reading ordinances.
Oh, actually, three B, I just wanna say, I also have to say that there's, I was told that there's a timing issue on this as well and that, um, that, uh, looking to include this, is that correct?
I was just gonna say that, Counselor.
Jeremy, you were?
Yes, that's correct. You're in the game, one of the games. I said that before.
This will be included on January fourth agenda for second reading.
Yes, the lawyer's saying.
Oh, you?
Yeah.
Oh, oh.
So both of those first reading ordinances will be up for second reading on January fourth at ten AM. Three C is an ordinance, uh, changing the date of the regular municipal election, from Tuesday in May to the general election by a binding referendum.
Which one is this?
This is three C.
So... So we basically go to referendum, again, in November twenty sixteen.
Yeah, then I haven't...
It's a referendum, it's a binding referendum during the presidential election, and we'll have the greatest turnout ever. And there should hopefully be no dispute as to what the...
I just wanted to make sure.
This question only addresses the date of the election.
How about the runoff? Is the boss, for thirty days after the election, after the runoff?
When we're gonna do this, in May?
So...
In May?
November twenty sixteen.
Twenty sixteen.
Yes.
So that means the person from downtown, twelve percent of the voter, would see and win the election if ten... the election if ten or fifteen people are running, and they'll put up a load of people.
According to this change, this is just...
That's a separate issue. Jeremy, I understand, I understand, we completely understood this paper, what they say, what they're gonna ask, it's not an issue. Because of May election, we have nonpartisan May election and runoff, there was one package was. So now, this question only asked to move in May to November. But there were one, just change the date, but now, when you change the package from to here now, our next question, then what happened to runoff?
So it's still a nonpartisan election and the statute provides exactly when and how a runoff would take place if it's necessary.
So now, this is what we should, some of our full information that are public, right? We're gonna change the election to May to November, but not only change the election date, but also we're gonna eliminate the runoff. Well, we're gonna have, keep the runoff. We're gonna have to, it's a separate issue, but it's a package.
Can I just add, can I just add the language and the...
The binding referendum was taken directly from the state statute, right? What the state statute says that you should put into a binding referendum if you're looking to change the code.
Yes, we understand.
No, it's, it's, not to add other things and change the...
After we have, you know, January, November election, May announcement, next day, what's the same day, we're gonna eliminate the runoff, you know, so we were just shocked. You know, we expected, as we understand...
Not we, you.
Oh, thank you very much, I, yeah, thank you.
I'm the same way, because I go along with you.
I understand, I understand, actually, as the same question many times when we just got decided, they say, oh, we don't know, we don't know, oh, we're gonna have a runoff. So that's why, one of the reason I say, listen, change the election to May to November, that's a serious problem. If we keep the, you know, runoff until December, it's gonna be a really serious problem. So now, after Jan, I mean, November, after the general election, May you announce what the next, we're gonna eliminate the runoff. So now, we wanna know exactly, as I say, our nonpartisan election package from the May election with runoff, that's one package. But if we just change our election date to May to November without mention to the runoff, you know, I think it's not for the people of Georgia City and the boroughs and the city councils.
So the question that is asked has to be asked by the statute this way, this is the question you have to ask. Runoffs is a completely separate question and a separate issue. If this not, if this binding referendum passes, then the election would be moved from May to November, it would still be a nonpartisan election and there would still be a runoff. And the runoffs, as always, are prescribed by statute when and how they take place. Okay? We all know that the aim of this administration is to move it to November, eliminate the runoff.
I, I will let the people vote.
That's what the mayor said, actually, the mayor said he got off the beaten runoff.
I will let them vote again.
That's not the point. The point is, if this question is, is successful, it'll move the elections from May to November and it would incorporate a runoff election as prescribed by statute. If it's the will of the residents of this body of, of, of Georgia City to get rid of runoffs, that's a separate question that has to be asked and cannot take effect without a separate action taking place.
We cannot put it together because you know what?
It's two questions, it can, it's naturally, it can't be put together.
Then when you put in the...
It's not just a hand.
Oh.
All right.
Okay.
That's what they said.
Okay. Three D, um, the... Two sixty-three, the retail and commercial premises.
Frank is here, this is Frank.
Anybody have any questions on that?
Let's just add, let me see if I can, just add Rose Avenue from Cada to Danford into the existing ordinance that you have a copy of from nineteen eighty-two. And it has the listing of the, of the blocks on it that were included previously, which requires the retail businesses to not conduct business from eleven PM to five PM, five AM in the morning. In this particular case, we had a fast food place on Rose Avenue that was staying open to four o'clock in the morning. We had numerous, numerous incidents, excuse me, of large crowds hanging out, the whole hours of the night, ordinance violations as far as drinking in public, loitering, loud music, disorderly conduct, and my favorite, urinating in public, large crowds, large fights, numerous shootings, robberies, and as recent, as recent as ten thirty, October thirtieth, there was an incident where they fired eighteen shots at that location, in and around that location, right outside, and at least one person was hit in the foot. And all this requires the dedication of significant resources from the police, which are taken from other places, whether they be in the South District or elsewhere in other districts, in order to take care of this when there are civil remedies or other remedies that can be used to abate such incidents. That's what this ordinance is about.
It's about making, putting those blocks in so they don't have to...
There's, if anybody from the council wants to see the background information on it, it's about as thick as this, the, it's a binder that was, I believe it's Sam Clark's office, but I also have it on computer, if you wanna, if you wanna see it, I can email it to you and you can open it up and take a look at. It has all the background information, including the letters of support from the block associations in the area, all the calls for service, et cetera, et cetera.
We did. We also emailed it to them as well, all the council.
Councilperson Coleman?
I, I just wanna say, I thank you so much, Frank, and I'm hoping that I'm understanding it correctly, is that you wanna include those blocks in the ordinance so that they'll be subject to having to close at the same time every other place. Okay, thank you.
You know, actually, with the heights, tuition height, we use that, it's a couple layer lift, it's working very good.
It's, it's been, it's stood up, as long as you have the background information, it has withstood court challenges.
It's working.
Thank you.
Three D, it is a, an amendment on chapter three thirty-two, vehicles and traffic, parking facilities operated by the Division of Parking Enforcement.
Okay, so I'm introducing this, you were handing out a fact sheet at the start of the meeting separately. Basically, this is the, the booting ordinance. It's repealing the booting, first, first-time booting offenses for, first-time offenses, it's repealing booting as a, as a means of redress.
Only by the two colleges, because they don't allow that anywhere else.
Um, okay, I'm being told by the legal that it's repealing it around the two colleges, zone three and zone eight, I guess it was. But basically, first-time boots are being eliminated so that if you're illegally parked in these residential permit zones, you will get a ticket, but you will not be booted should this pass.
Doesn't tell you. You wish you were summoned today, it doesn't go into the system, maybe for three, four, or five days, then it might not go into the state system for quite a while, and no cop or nobody's gonna run a plate.
Well, the law, the law is clear that you can only boot if there are three or more outstanding parking tickets.
Yes, and, and one instance of failure to appear.
If the, if the, if the parking tickets, you're talking about a period of time before it goes into the system is unpaid.
So you're absolutely right, we would...
Ordinarily, in our normal zones, we would only boot to an extreme offender. So it would be someone who had multiple tickets, didn't show up in court, isn't paying them, it's not something where you say, okay, the first time you get a pass and the second time we boot you. We, we don't use it as that type of a tool, except for in specific areas where we believe is a height justification to, to boot in the first instance and, and, and extreme parking need. And so the question before you right now with this ordinance is, does this NJCU zone really meet the need to want to have such an extreme remedy? I'd say Peters, sorry. Both of these, both of these disgusting. Councilperson Coleman?
Um, just because I've experienced, why is that the only place that we're doing that? Because I went to get a hot, a hamburger from Fat Burgers or whatever the place is down here on Columbus, whatever, right behind thirty Montgomery Street on my lunch hour, I was in there long enough to order, and the signs are so far apart that you didn't see that you're not supposed to park here unless you drive a block and a half down the street. And when I came out, I had a boot on my car, and it took me three and a half hours and I had to pay the ticket before, I had to go pay the ticket without a car. You have to go to the location, so...
Give you a response here for that.
Okay.
Presently, the only two residential parking zones that allow a first-time boot are the two by the colleges, and this would eliminate that. But it doesn't eliminate first-time boots everywhere in the city.
Where else are we?
The residential district, which is coming... A residential district now, but was intended to be a commercial district, is the one that, that comes to mind, which is where the Exchange Place area is.
Yeah, they do first-time boots there.
Where is the law that captures that?
It's in the city cover. And it allows...
So I want that as part of it as well.
Okay, a separate, well, be, you know, I think maybe you just wanna hear from the parking authority, I'll do whatever you talk, you know, we'll do whatever you want us to do, but...
Well, I think now that would be important to hear from the actual business community in the city as well.
And, and yeah, because you know why the parking, the city actually charges a lot of money to people to allow them to, they get permits and they put them on their cars. I don't know a lot about this, but I know that they allow them to...
We'll tackle that another time, yes.
Yeah.
This is just, this is just the university zones.
Right, this is just the...
Or residential parking areas.
Exactly, exactly.
Yeah, yeah.
Those are the only two that do that.
Okay, we're moving on.
Okay, three F is withdrawn, uh, three G is a franchise ordinance granting permission to One Edward Hart Road LLC to make private improvements in the public right of way. We have the attorney here as well, if any questions are, need to be answered.
Any questions on that? There are none, moving on.
Look, can you expand all the first, before we ask a question?
Sorry, sorry, he's got a question, I'm so sorry.
Sorry, that's okay. My name is Alexis Lozara, I'm the attorney for One Edward Hart.
Councilman, no, I just give you some explanation, you know?
Oh, sure. Um, so we got approvals in August before planning for a restaurant, brew pub with ancillary bowling and indoor recreation area, recreation, and we need a franchise for the public, the public street in front, I'm sorry, the public area in front. It's ten thousand square feet along Morris Peasant.
Any questions? None.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item, three H.
Is an ordinance entering, authorizing the city to enter into a lease with White Street Block Association for the use of seventy-five Bayview Avenue for community garden.
No question. Next item.
Three I is a similar lease with community guarding, one seventy-four, one seventy-six Brunswick suite.
No questions?
No questions. J and K were touched on earlier. L is an ordinance approving a fifteen-year tax exemption for Ninth Street, Ninth Street Two Urban Renewal LLC.
Okay.
Any questions?
Questions related to that? Chuck Harrington is here, he has a few years ago.
This one, very interesting, I read it every actual financial agreement, this one actually, city ordinance make me very interested. Can't you expand, I think a city ordinance may be better, can't you expand the section three or four dash thirty-seven, three? So what is that, if any project, this is a very interesting part, I think I wish you all read as a council, if it's under twenty-five million dollars project, doesn't require, you know, what are they called, the labor agreement?
P L A.
Over twenty-five million dollars, they require a, a labor agreement, they are, we understand. But always I squint my head, numbers can fix, you know what I'm saying, they can make project total construction cost twenty-four million dollars, so they can avoid their labor agreement. Now, this one is the only one actually, city ordinance mentioned to that, later on, when they audit their total construction cost, if they over twenty-five million dollars, but job is done, right? Job is done. And later, when you find that construction cost more than, more than twenty-five million dollars, then first you claim like a twenty-four million dollars, then we able to penalty, right?
Well, that, that was always the law, and it is always the law, we just... Um, decided that from now on, we will put it right in the financial agreement, but that has always been the law, I mean...
It's always there.
Right.
Yeah, but financial agreement, they not, they mentioned the labor agreement, but this one like on the ordinance, I think it is the first time I remembered, I remember that they put this...
Well, you know, we don't, in every... In ordinances and financial agreements, we don't necessarily recite every single law that applies to that project. However, we thought that it was important to highlight it in this instance because the numbers came so close, and then we decided, well, gee, that's, that's a good idea to put in all the financial agreements anyway. You know, it highlights it for everyone, but even if it's not there, they still have to comply.
So what kind of help you want there? If they're bothering, or, you know?
Well, ultimately, it, they could terminate the tax abatement, it could be, you know, that, if it proceeds, I think it's more than six months, they're required to provide a, an accounting, an audit of their costs. If it's more than twenty-five million, there are two things that can happen. One, they can charge a higher service charge, or they can terminate the tax abatement.
Okay, we have a...
They're aware of that.
Project now, any project violating that...
So, so, so councilman, when we took office, year after, I, I sponsored that legislation.
Yes, but I mean that, yes, after that...
And I'm gonna check, see if you voted for it, I gotta check.
Yeah, but I mean...
I'm gonna vote for it.
Okay, let's, let's say this...
No, you're bringing it up.
Thank you.
But we got it in place, that's why it's there.
Okay, forget it. Let's talk about the specifics of this ordinance.
Any additional questions?
Questions with regard to, so the twenty-five million, the estimate comes under twenty-five million?
Yeah, we're like twenty-one seven, so, you know, we, my clients are fully aware of the ordinance going in, they, they just completed the phase one, so they're, they're very, you know, they're, they're confident in their, in their numbers. But that being said, they, they totally understand that the ordinance has been in place, whether it was in the financial agreement or not, that's, that's the law. And at the end of the project, they will provide certified costs to the city, and they, they're aware of the penalty provisions in event it's higher.
I have, is the client, just, just...
Yes.
Construction for any current tax abatements been completed to date?
Uh, I think one forty-eight was, was completed, one forty-eight First Street.
So just so you know, I've asked at previous meetings, ask the board of report on the Manning reports and so forth, before we issue additional abatements to folks that you have completed a project. Provide the audit of financial... You want the certified financials or the Mannings? You want both?
Good, as, as part of the application, we provide certifications that we're in compliance with any, any and all financial agreements and tax agreements, so that is part of the process.
Do we have copies of that stuff, so? We have copies of the certifications, yes. The Mannings and the certified financials, I don't know if they've done the audited certified financials yet, the Manning reports is numerous, but we, we can get those for you, John, if we just...
And three D's? Is councilman, has one, is she in the meeting on Wednesday?
No, she's not, she's not...
Because I think she had, she had a concern, I don't know if it's been addressed.
Well, I know, I know my client has, has advised her of it, I don't know, I'm not aware of any concerns, but...
I, I can't remember, but I know she was, I think, I don't know.
Okay, well, we can reach out to...
If, if you don't mind.
Yeah, absolutely.
Can you copy me on that?
Sure.
So I think this is the first project, they like are buying extra tax abate to five years, I think this is the first one, right?
Right, right, this is, yeah, under, under the new policy, it's ten years, is just the...
It's just the, the... 10 years under the, this tier. And then you can, you can request or apply for an additional five years. But, but that requires a, if you, a contribution of $15,000 per unit. So there, in addition to the affordable housing contribution in, in this project, which would be $133,000, there's an additional $990,000 being paid to the city for the benefit of an additional five years of the abatement. That's part of the new policy.
So in other words, only $3,000 per unit cost for extra five more years tax abatement. Not bad.
So we like to look at this as an additional million dollars.
This city working so hard.
Okay, we should have to get a...
Thank you.
An ordinance abolishing the division of architecture, engineering, traffic, and transportation, creating the division of architecture and division of engineering, traffic, and transportation of the city code.
Yeah, that's, that's at my request. It had always been two separate divisions. Early on in the administration, it was merged. I think there was some leadership concerns. I think we've alleviated, you know, Mr. Cunha's been here several times. We think, we feel very comfortable with him leading the engineering department on its own and let Brian Weller handle strictly the architecture. There's no cost involved, it's just basically organizationally, just creating two divisions.
Okay, any questions? None, moving on.
3N is an ordinance authorizing the City of Jersey City to file an offer of financial assistance to acquire certain property collectively known as a 6th Street embankment from Conrad.
No, no, that's not...
Can't you expand more? Because we just got as a late item, so I have no idea whatsoever.
Jeremy?
6th Street. Sorry, go ahead. 6th Street.
This is the...
We got it as a late item, so we did a case in with it, so would you expand more? Number is 3N like a case.
So this is just a slight amendment to the OFA ordinance you guys already passed. If you remember correctly, when we did that OFA ordinance, we went into a closed session. And then, of course, our opponent, who was here earlier, but has seemed to have left in that matter, had his attorneys challenge that closed session to say that it was an unlawful closed session.
Your attorney's here.
Oh, okay, perfect. And so, and, and, and that, when we gave them the transcript from that closed session, it was overly redacted. We went back and forth on that matter, and the judge decided after the in-camera review that there was additional information on that transcript that we could give to our opponent in that matter. So we had to submit to him a separate document. The, the result of all of that back and forth is that we, we had to make public that additional information, which you'll see attached to this ordinance. In addition to the ordinance, we had to change some of the very specifics of the funding bond in this matter to allow for a broader use, just in an abundance of caution, which was a recommendation from our bond counsel. And, and we also wanted to change some technical date stuff that had to be done so that we would be allowed to do some filings with the STB. So that's what's going on in this, this ordinance here. It basically just effectuates what our intentions all along were with the OFA ordinance. And, and we just espelled to the suspenders, just wanted, in an abundance of caution.
So in other words, we can discuss, wait. The bond counsel authorized the city, we have to be, gee, have to be correct with some issue.
Well, they decided in abundance of caution, we should just change what the initial use was on the bond, just to make sure that we're, we're clearly, clearly stating to people what it is we're, we're doing, yeah.
Why does the city complain about the 10th Street embankment? Why is the city spending all this money?
So councilman, I thought, I think I answered...
I know, you answered the question, but it's still wrong. When I look past there every day, I see a building being built on the 10th Street embankment, and yet they're busting the 6th Street embankments back for the last 10 or 12 years. Taxpayers' money's being wasted there, and it's, it's gotten to be a sham, it's a joke.
Well, certainly we didn't initiate the lawsuit, but this is...
Jeremy, I know you did a great job, and I really appreciate it, you know.
Thank you.
It's a, it's a major lucky to have you, you know. But now, my concern is that, actually, this question, Jeremy, we bring up the last time when we did that, the city council?
Sure.
I still remember that.
Sure.
That one of the persons say, raised the issue that maybe we violating law of a bond.
Yeah.
You know, that time, I clearly remember that, you say no, and...
Our, 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 our opinion of the bond counsel is, remains the same, which is that we're fine. But what we're trying to do is avoid unnecessary litigation, given that we have a very litigious opponent in this matter. So there's no, there's no cost or impact to the city for expanding the definition, so why not do it and just avoid the question?
Okay.
Interesting, I was trying to protect the city.
That's...
Appreciation, council. I was not in the meeting, I excuse myself, and I can't, so...
Sure.
So I'm not gonna support.
Okay, 3O, 3O we touched on earlier. And is it my, my understanding of, Jeremy, if I'm remembering correctly, we're not gonna add 3O until after the second reading?
That's right, we'll defer on that item. So after the second reading, they have their public hearing.
Just procedurally, I just want to make sure I'm clear, because when I, I usually, that's the first thing I ask the council to do, is take a motion to add these items on the agenda. I will not include that until after the second reading.
All right. And then we'll make a motion.
Excellent. Any questions on, on the second reading ordinance, items 4A through 4G? Hearing none, moving on. Any questions on the petition communications, reported directors, office communications? Hearing none, going right to the resolutions. 10A is a resolution authorizing calendar year 20, that should say 2015, sorry about that, appropriation transfers. 10B is a resolution authorizing the insertion of special items of revenue and appropriations in calendar year 2015 municipal budget. 10C is a resolution authorizing cancellation of unexpected budget appropriation balances.
Hold up, yeah. BA, right?
Yes, sir.
Yeah, 10A.
10A, yes.
Yes, now, engineering, architecture, traffic transfers, $113,000, right?
Yes, sir.
They are transferred to, to somewhere like a, what is the reason left of $113,000?
Uh, there was some new hires that we didn't do, so didn't make this year. Uh, there were some new hires we didn't make in, in the, in the BA's office.
Okay, now, H H is director, $170,000 is a lot of money, can I hire people?
Yeah, she's had more, she's been transferring people in various different divisions. She's kind of reorganized a little bit. There's probably a new hire not done, but I think more organizationally, she's transferred people to other divisions.
And now, division of health, they want to increase $170,000. What is the reason there?
Well, it's probably because we're taking $170,000 from the director's office because you transferred people into the division of health.
Okay. Police.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, police is $100,000, what is it? They increase $100,000 more. Is it too small to overtime?
You know, I, I think it's just, just kind of be careful, because we don't, we can't end the year in an, with an over expenditure, and this is the last council meeting. I think there's just budget being cautious with police, because you never know with December, the holidays, overtime could be a little high. I, I think police is gonna be under budget. I think it's just to be careful we don't go over budget.
Excellent, okay. Okay, good.
Thank you, thank you.
And D, Resolution 15840 is a resolution authorizing cancellation of unexpected budget appropriation balances. 10E is a resolution authorizing, authorizing the cancellation of unused and unfunded authorizations. 10F is a resolution canceling outstanding...
Oh, 10E, Billy, you know, I have to mention to that, good job. You know, finance at the BA, I give to a lot of credit, you know?
And couple of council meetings, you know, you asked about some numbers in the audit, and I told you we were gonna start cleaning up, cleaning it up. This is the process of cleaning up our books, canceling all open items.
$30 million, lot of money.
Yep.
So, you know, so, thank you for you, you only, you know, pay attention to this issue. You know, so it looks good, that, that, you know, okay, now, but...
Sorry.
Okay, next item.
10F. 10F is a resolution canceling outstanding stale data checks.
It's a $530,000 total, so what happened? Did I cancel the check?
These are checks that we've issued through either payroll to vendors that no one's ever cashed. So they're back to 2011, 2012. They're still open in our books, we're just canceling them, and now replenishing our, you know, our operations.
So now, this is a extra unexpected revenue we're gonna have?
This, this will, this will help our surplus, yes, councilman.
Right, so you're passing the surplus.
Same amount as like...
That's, that's like Medicare checks.
$57840?
Yes.
Medicare to who?
To retirees. From 2011.
Also, the, the next question, if they claim it later, what happened?
There, there's a mechanism to reuse your check.
They have a mechanism, so it's actually not disappeared, right?
Well, from 2011, I would imagine, they're not looking for the money right now.
Okay, thank you, good job too.
10G is a resolution approving the appointment of Benny Anderson as a deputy tax assessor of the City of Jersey City.
What's that, sir?
Why, 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 why do we need a next?
Yeah, current employee, okay.
But why, why do we need a third tax assessor?
A third deputy tax assessor?
Yeah, why do we...
We only have one tax assessor.
We, we have that, hello, right?
Okay, next.
But why do we need, what, I'm, I'm asking a question.
Oh, you have a question?
Go on. So why do we need a, a deputy?
You know, there are certain duties and responsibilities when they appear in tax court that are needed, that a deputy tax assessor can handle more than the, than the staff person because of the, I guess, the amount of appeals. We have a lot more representation at the tax court venue, and there's a need to have Mr. Anderson and our other deputies.
But do we, do we, we have two deputies, right?
We currently have two deputies.
Right.
Yes, sir.
So now, there's gonna be a third?
There'll be a third, plus the assessor.
This tenure position?
This is a tenure?
This is not a tenure position.
All right. It's not tenure.
I thought the tax collective position is...
Tax assessor.
Accessor, okay. So the deputy is not tenure?
Deputy's not.
Excellent. 10H is a resolution reappointing Earlman Rosen as a part-time evening judge in the municipal court. 10I, 10I is a resolution appointing Maureen K. Hureens as a member of the Jersey City Municipal Utilities Authority. J and K were touched on earlier. L is a cancellation of 2015 real estate taxes on Block 22604, Lot 24, also known as 314 Wantwood King Drive, and Block 2001, Lot 20, also known as 416B Community Corey Avenue owned by the Jersey City Redevelopment Agency.
So now, 10J, can you explain a little bit more? You talked about, right?
Which one?
10J.
10J.
So we talked about 3.5...
Maureen was here.
No, Maureen talked about that earlier.
Yeah, oh, the first one, yeah, yeah.
Maureen Cosgrove, tax collector. 10M is a resolution authorizing the business administrator to execute a discharge mortgage affecting 300 Arlington Avenue. 10N is a resolution authorizing business administrator to execute a discharge mortgage affecting 330 Forest Street. 10O is a resolution amending Resolution 1578, 781, authorizing the business administrator to execute discharge mortgage affecting 72 Wagon Parkway. 10P is a resolution expressing solidarity with residents of the San Bernardino, California.
Can we move this up to the top of the agenda?
We can defer.
Defer to that, yeah.
Okay. 10Q is a resolution honoring Vijay and Omuro Gupta on the 50th anniversary of their marriage. 10R is a resolution honoring Roman Italian imports for 42 years of service to the community. Say, I see them close, a resolution...
I thought, are we presenting at this meeting for this? I'm so much, I gotta ask if he's gonna be here. Okay.
Yeah, I'll find out. Yeah, I agree, I agree, I agree.
10S is a resolution commemorating the 36th Annual Thanksgiving Football Classic. 10T is a resolution congratulating Grandmaster Austin Wright Sr. for 30 years of martial arts education, world champion, and community service. 10U is a resolution congratulating, congratulating Justin L. Dafina on his receipt of the Eagle Scout Award. 10V is a resolution congratulating Frank Jokes on his rece, receipt of the Eagle Scout Award. 10W is a resolution congratulating Giovanni Pravita, Praveter, on his receipt of the Eagle Scout Award. 10X is a resolution congratulating Jonathan Vincent Riccio on his receipt of the Eagle Scout Award. 10Y, I believe, is being withdrawn. This, this resolution actually shouldn't have made the agenda. And why? Sorry?
Yeah.
Right? 10Z was touched on earlier. 10Z1 is a resolution of municipal council, the City of Jersey City, authorizing the acceptance of a gift from Stop &amp; Shop, a local supermarket in Jersey City, with a total value of $450 given to our seniors at St. Joseph Honors Senior Center. 10Z2 is a resolution authorizing application to New Jersey Public Board of Utilities, Local Government Energy Audit Program. 10Z3 is a resolution expressing the support of Jersey City Redevelopment Agency's application to the Hudson County Home Grant Program. 10Z4 is a resolution authorizing the acceptance of fiscal year 16 Cooperative Marketing Grant from the New Jersey Department of State Division of Travel and Tourism. 10Z5 is a resolution authorizing the extension of a grant agreement between the City of Jersey City and Hudson County Department of Health and Human Services to fund Jersey City Municipal Alliance. 10Z6, resolution authorizing, authorizing contracts with various vendors for the delivery of substance abuse prevention and education programs for the Department of Health and Human Services through the Municipal Drug Alliance Program. 10Z7 is a resolution authorizing the City of Jersey City to enter in an agreement for identification and authorizing the city risk manager to issue a letter of insurance to certain nonprofit and public agencies. 10Z8 is a resolution ratifying an agreement with Granite Telecommunications for communicate, for telecommunications services for the Department of Administration Division of Information Technology. 10Z9 is a resolution authorizing a license agreement with the City of Jersey City and Greystone Environmental Management LLC to enter into a property, into a city property designated as Block 15801, Lot 3, aka 52 Etna Street, and Block 15801, Lot 78, aka 41 Etna Street. 10Z10 is a resolution authorizing the execution of a license agreement with the Jersey City Moms Meetup Group for the use of portion of City Hall Park as a community garden.
That's crazy.
I know, I was waiting for that, I was waiting for that.
I mean, it was just flowers. I mean, it's the City Hall, it's not...
There, there, I think, what are they planning over there? We... They're, they're planning, they've been doing it, they've been doing it over there.
We're trying to get the police monument moved over here, and they said, no, they can plant a flower garden.
I thought we were planting weed.
John, John.
My understanding would be a flower garden, it's currently, they're actually...
Currently doing it right now, they've been, they've been, they've been gardening there for quite some time. If you notice, in, in the front of City Hall, there is a fenced-in portion on the northern half of the, of the park in front of City Hall. They've been tending to that garden for quite some time, this is...
At the front of City Hall?
No, it's nothing to do with that.
I, I can't speak to that, councilman, but I can tell you that they've been gardening there for quite some time, and this is actually far, no, the, right, exactly. You're not allowed to grow fruit, fruit and vegetables there, yeah.
Authorizing use of competitive contracting to award a contract for operation management and administration data processing services for the digitization and storage of documents maintained or created by the Department of Housing, Economic Development, and Commerce. 10Z12 through 10Z18 were touched on by Director Redfield. 10Z19 is a resolution authorizing the settlement of suit of Rose Davis versus the City of Jersey City. 10Z20 was touched on earlier, 10Z21... Well, I'm, I'm gonna get to that. Actually, the, not on your printed agenda, since the councilman brought it up there, your last resolution would be 10...
Councilman.
36 is a resolution author... 36 is a resolution authorizing a closed caucus of the municipal council on, on Wednesday, December 16, 2015, to discuss the settlement that I just explained about Rose Davis. Um, I'm assuming we're gonna defer to that resolution before we approve the actual settlement? Am I correct?
Yes.
Okay.
So we'll, just, just for logistics purposes?
Start of the meeting, we'll start the meeting, do our normal start business, add the new items and so forth, and then, do you want to go into closed session, or?
I can do that, that'd be great.
Yeah, okay.
While the public is still there.
Yeah.
Well, we're not...
It won't take very long, right?
We gotta ask the...
Oh, no, we go to the caucus room?
Yeah, we go to the caucus room, yeah.
Yeah. What, Wednesday?
Shouldn't be, I'll double check that.
Usually, a claim needs on Tuesday.
Yeah.
Just reserve if it's not...
Okay. Um, 10Z21 is a resolution authorizing the extension of a contract with U.S. Security Associates to provide security guard services for various locations citywide on a month-to-month basis, not to exceed three months, but to Department of Administration, Administrative Services. 10Z22 was touched on earlier. 10Z23 is authorizing professional service agreement with CarePoint Health Medical Group to provide medical services for employees injured on the job for the City of Jersey City. 10Z24 is a...
It's a, it's a flat fee, it doesn't matter how many...
Which one is that, 10Z1?
It's a $250,000.
And that bid was a million dollars cheaper than the second low's bid.
Right. So even though we have only one claim, one patient, still we pay $350,000.
Or if we have $3,000 claims, it's still be $300,000.
Yeah, okay.
10Z24 is a resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Strulowich and Gargulo Physical Therapy and Rehabilitation to provide physical therapy and rehabilitation services for employees injured on the job for the City of Jersey City.
But the BA, so, so what my concern is there? If we get hurt in the job, that's what they get the treatment from this place, right?
Right, through the CarePoint first, for the, for the medical care, and then, depending on what's needed after that, they can go to, you know, specialists as needed, and then, as recommended by, uh, the CarePoint, and also considering the, the employees' feelings as well, what doctor they should go to.
Well, I mean, see, employee, we talk about workers' comp, no?
Yeah, that's what this is.
Then...
This is the workers' comp contract.
See, there's my question is there, when I get the workers' comp, you know, that the, like, I got the workers' comp, my business, from the, uh, one of the issues company. They, they, they a certain place, and when I, my employee get hurt, we go that, you know, facility, you know, doctors, so, so. I don't have to pay that doctors of, it's a contract based on pay. But now...
Because you're thinking that your, your employee has their own insurance, and they try to operate on you, no?
So when you get hurt from the job, workers' comp cover all medically, and the workers' comp designate that...
But you're thinking of, you have workers' comp insurance.
Right?
Yeah, well, because of insurance.
Self-insure, self-insure.
So we are...
Nobody can move.
So that's what it is, right?
Self-insure.
Even workers' comp, we do that?
I know. Oh, that's right.
Workers' comp, right?
Everything.
Everything, yeah.
Oh, we have five.
We have access to insurance coverage of one certain point.
Uh-huh, okay.
Okay. All right.
10Z25 is a resolution authorizing the award of professional service contracts at EKA Associates PA to perform a survey of 15 East Linden Avenue and produce minor subdivision plans for 15 East Linden Avenue. 10Z26 was touched on earlier. 10Z27 is a resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Bianca Camaro?
Bianco.
Bianco, sorry. And the Stefania, Difania?
Difano.
Difano. Problem with those Italian names.
Well, you're...
To provide legal defense services for workers' compensation matters for the City of Jersey City. Uh, 10Z28, resolution authorizing professional service agreement with Chason, Leiner, Leener and Lamperello to provide legal defense service for workers' compensation matters for the City of Jersey City. 10Z20...
Why do you have all these lawyers upstairs? Everything is phoned out. Nothing, I'm not talking about you, Ms. Monahan, you're okay. You.
10Z29, resolution authorizing... Professional service agreement with Netchett, Deanen and Hillman to provide legal defense services for worker compensation matters for the City of Jersey City. 10Z30 is a resolution ratifying the award of professional service agreement with the law firm of Miguel Roy, Deich?
Deutsch.
Deutsch?
Morgenkarten.
There you go.
How many we have? We have a couple years of workers' comp compensation case.
Councilman, you?
Yeah. How many years you have a workers' compensation case?
How many claims?
Yeah, claims of what case? So claim is one things, you know, but case, a legal case.
Every claim is a legal case, it's, I'm, as, as an administrative court, I don't have the numbers on you, but I'll get it for you Wednesday, but it's, it's many, we have two guys.
I can tell you that, you know, we recently hired a 30, third-party administrator to manage our, our workers' comp. When they first got the contract, they had about 1,200 open cases. I think as of today, it's down to 600, and their, their goal is to get that down to, an organization our size, they think about 450, 500 is realistic. So, on that, maybe just 400 open cases, which means potentially 400 legal cases.
That's what we did, we did it this way.
We split it up.
That was 10Z30 that we were just agreeing on, that's that? Law firms to present, to represent the City of Jersey City negotiations with the Jersey City Fire's local 1066.
Wait, one second, John.
Yep.
Time is issue?
We're, we're starting that.
Let's wrap it up?
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying. Uh, 10Z31 is a resolution approving the five-year tax exemption pursuant to the provisions of NJSA 4821-1, exact section 3049, 304-9 of the Municipal Code for Property Designated, uh, the City Tax Map, more, more commonly known by the address of 223-231 First Street.
Why you have to come out of resolution except the ordinance?
Why?
Why do we need a resolution?
Why do you program?
Five-year tax abatement?
Five-year tax, usually five-year tax wants to come out of ordinance, but not the resolution.
This is because it's, um, in this, the, the five-year tax abatement ordinance, the city council designated the authority to approve tax abatements to the tax assessor, unless collectively, the amount of the, um, taxes would exceed $200,000, and in that case, that would go to the city council. It doesn't happen often, but in this instance, it did, so that's why you're seeing it. Otherwise, the tax assessor would have individually, administratively approved this, and you would never see it.